What, never mind.
He's checking to see if it's live.
I was gonna do that.
Or recording.
I'm gonna say wait.
We want to get every second of this.
I'd like to call to order the city council meeting on February 10th, 2022 at 6:06 PM. This meeting is the postponed meeting originally scheduled for February 3rd, 2022, which was postponed to hazardous weather. We'll first have a moment of silence and the pledge led by Councilperson Crossen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, could you do the calling of the role? Councilperson Aller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar. Councilperson Boland.
Present.
Councilperson Crossen.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Lautermilke.
Here.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Eight are present, one is absent. Uh, Councilperson Azar stated he had a, um, conflict with tonight's meeting. Yes. Another event, I'm sorry. Okay, and then this next section, we have 30 minutes of time for public comment. Um, these are for items, non-agenda items for tonight. So if you have anything to speak on that are non-agenda items, um, I would ask that you try to limit your comments to three minutes or less, but now is the time to approach the podium to speak.
Can I give a handout to the council?
Sure.
Thank you.
Council members, I'm Jim Spear. I'm the president of the board for the Terra Foods Cooperative Market. Uh, we would like to present the case for Terra Foods Cooperative Market to receive some funds from the ARPA funding. Terra Foods was incorporated in 2009. It's been hard hit by COVID in our attempts to open the store. It will be a full-service grocery store that's open to the public that provides local and organic food. Its products will be useful for Terre Haute and the community and definitely the local community. We are, we have purchased a store on April 15th, 2021 in the 12 Points District. So we're helping revitalize that district, which is also a food desert. So Terra Foods has plans to provide 20 jobs at least to the community. Again, we'd provide local and organic food where we can allow our neighbors to produce food and we can provide an outlet for that. So it will help grow businesses in Terre Haute. Uh, as I mentioned, it will help revitalize 12 Points area. Cooperative markets are destination stores. People come to do grocery shopping at those locations and then spend money or shop in other places. It fills a food desert. Located in 12 Points, there's no ability to walk and get fresh produce within a mile or even two miles of that location. So we can provide that fresh produce from our local farms directly to that location. It supports local producers that can grow food, grow meats, uh, in our, in the Wabash Valley and provide that. Uh, Bazlers makes an attempt at that, but otherwise there's no locals, no store that provides that. Fresh Time will not source like from White Violet Center for products that we can have and grow here locally. Uh, Terra Foods also keeps money in the community. So money that is spent in Terra Foods mainly stays here rather than money going to Kroger or Walmart mostly leaves our community. As I mentioned, it's good for the local community, that local neighborhood, Collett Park and Spencer Park, but anyone within the Terre Haute area can drive, uh, to the store within 15 or 20 minutes. So it's good for the entire area. We have a, a list on the back here of specific renovations and equipments that we would like to buy, purchase, uh, capital, uh, equipment and expenditures that fit under the ARPA regulations. Uh, and your support from the city council, from the city of Terre Haute would help us get the store open and provide this opportunity for others to grow the economy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I forget if I'm supposed to say my name and anything else.
Please state your name and address, please, for the record.
So hi, I'm Mr. Barbara Batista. I am here to speak about some concerns I have about the Human Relations Commission. Some irregularities that have caused me some concern. And so I'm just gonna read from the ordinance that, um, is the foundational document as best I can tell because when I looked on the web a couple of days ago, it, it was hard to find this one. So I'm not sure what's going on with the documents. Human relations to the common council of the city of Terre Haute finds a prejudice and practice of invidious discrimination in employment, housing, public accommodations, education and financing practices against any individual or group based on race, color, religion, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, status or physical or mental disabilities are a menace, menace to the public peace and welfare. Common council, you all, the city of Terre Haute desires to better serve the residents of the city in an attempt to better meet the purpose of eradicating prejudice and the practice of invidious discrimination. I had to look up in videos. Uh, definitely, that went on to make some definitions and I think we know this, but I'm gonna read it aloud too. Discrimination means any difference in treatment based upon race, color, religion, national origin, age, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, marital status or physical or mental disability. Discrimination also shall mean the exclusion of a person from or failure or refusal to extend to a person equal opportunities because of those same characteristics. Here's, here's probably the biggest source of my concern. The commission shall consist of seven members, four of whom shall be members from the, only four shall be members of the same political party. Three shall be appointed by the common council and four by the mayor. And the terms shall be three years and a successor, uh, da-da-da-da, that's because it was their very first time. The point is they can only have two consecutive terms. And I'm concerned that there's been some folks on the council for, um, shall we say longer than that? And I'm concerned about the way that, uh, members have been appointed. So thanks for your, because I'm really concerned about the functioning of the Human Relations Commission for the betterment of this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening. I'm Josh Price. I'm also, uh, with Terra Foods, uh, here to make a case to try to get funding for our project. I'm gonna try not to echo too much of what Jim had to say, but what I've provided to you is just, um, some data that I, I was able to mine up through the, uh, Census Bureau, USDA, uh, and some health data information. I'm not gonna read through this in detail, but what I'm trying to do here is just sort of paint a picture of the census tracts within the 12 Points neighborhood. There are two, two census tracts there and I looked at data specific to those with the exception of, uh, the health data, which is, which is county data. As Jim mentioned, the, the area is a food desert and, you know, that, that's an important thing that we would like to solve. If you look at the second point, um, you know, there are people, and this is for Terre Haute as well, but specifically for the census tracts in 12 Points, you know, there are percentages of people, residents who don't have cars, which make, makes this grocery store important so that people would be able to walk or ride a bike safely to get there. Um, the next, uh, paragraph deals with poverty and unemployment. You can look at the, uh, the percentages there. As Jim said, Terra Foods would be looking at creating 20 competitive jobs in that neighborhood. Um, the data that I saw also pointed out that the age, uh, for the, the, I guess the highest group of unemployed people within, uh, the census tracts in Terre Haute in general were, for males and females, uh, were in the ages 18 to 24, which is a, a target demographic for these jobs that we would be creating. That doesn't, uh, consider also the jobs in terms of producers within the Wabash Valley that would be, you know, producing, raising, uh, the, the goods that we would sell. Uh, then you look at the, the health information. Um, I just pulled some of the, the data from that. That again is county related, but, um, in all of these cases, I feel like, you know, a healthy diet, people who have access to healthy foods that would certainly help, help combat that such as, uh, heart disease, stroke deaths, obesity, things of that nature. Um, and so I just want, I was just hoping that you would consider, uh, those data-driven points, um, you know, as we try to get funding for this project. And lastly, I think also in addition to, um, you know, these, the data-driven topics that I listed here, there's also some intangibles that come along with this project. Um, part of that would be beautification of the neighborhood. The building we have is rather ugly at this point, as are many of the buildings that are along that stretch on Mafiaette. Um, this project would help to beautify that building. Also, you know, that building's been around since I think like 1910 or something. So that's a part of the history of 12 Points. We would be preserving that building for our use, but then for future uses as well. And I think also, you know, tying into all the other, you know, exciting things that are happening in 12 Points, this is all part of creating a sense of place and achieving a higher quality of life, which is going to attract more people and also, you know, keep people in those neighborhoods. So I hope you'll consider all these things, uh, when you're making your decisions. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Elliott. I live on Margaret Drive and I run a little farm called The Pickery. Uh, we've been going at it now for seven years. This is, uh, beginning of our eighth season and I'm up here also to talk about Terra Foods and its request for ARPA funds. Um, right now, we don't really have that many local farms and it's a shame. Um, but one of the reasons we don't is that, that the local firms don't have any place to sell their ware, their, their products. Uh, the large stores won't take you if you don't go through a distributor and Bazlers will sell a few things, but they're pretty picky. And, um, you can't make a living selling at the farmer's market. So Terra Foods provides an outlet for local farmers to sell their product. Their, their canned, the same things they can, their meats, their eggs and their produce. When people see more local foods in their stores, they begin to realize that food doesn't just come from the grocery store, that it comes from farms and it can come from local farms. And what is that place I keep passing by on Margaret? You know, it looks like they grow food there. And, and they get an interest in it and they might have a greater interest in trying fruits and vegetables and, and supporting these local farms. And what we get then is more local farms. And, uh, and it contributes to our, you know, our farm economy here in the Wabash Valley. Um, pretty soon, when you have local interest and you have local farms, you start getting, uh, farm-to-table restaurants, like even if you don't go to them, you think they're cool because they are. And finally, you have a robust local food system that really adds to our community. If you go down to Bloomington on a Saturday, you can't help but notice the farmer's market and they have three of them. They have a very nice, um, food co-op down there. And I'm not saying we have to be Bloomington, but we, we could, we could step up a notch here and through Terra Foods. A couple of other things, it insulates Terre Haute, Terre Haute from potential food shortages. If we don't have local farms, we don't have any insulation. Um, the money also stays in our community. So money spent at The Pickery or at Terra Foods stays in our community and recirculates. And I think it also diversifies our city. Like we, we embrace higher education here. We embrace, um, a, a robust healthcare system that provides healthcare far and wide. We embrace industry. Let's embrace our farms. Let's embrace small farms and a robust local food system. So I encourage you to, um, award the, uh, money that Terra Foods is asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Dwayne Malone. I'm here tonight, uh, to talk about our Human Relations Commission and I'm going to speak on the qualification of members for this commission. All members shall be residents of the city of Terre Haute or a property owner within the city of Terre Haute and who reside within Vigo County. The mayor and the common council shall make up those appointments which ensure general ordinance number six created 2006, uh, in May, it looks like. That members are persons who have demonstrated a commitment to the purpose of which the commission is created and the commission is broadly representative of the community in regards to race, religion, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity and abilities. It should be the duty of the mayor and the common, and the common council publicly to solicit suggestions for commission appointments from organizations having an interest in the improvement of intergroups' relations in the community and to give the thoughtful consideration to the appointments of persons who are suggested. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. The government calls me Donald, my friends call me Brock, my colleagues call me Lo. My name is Donald Brock Lo. I've been a, uh, longtime ci- citizen, resident of Terre Haute. I went to Vigo County Schools. Um, I play football at Indiana State Attended College there and I've been working and serving in this great city as a public servant for about seven years currently. Um, I'm here tonight as a child of God first, a father, a husband, and as I mentioned, a, uh, concerned citizen. I love, uh, my wife, who is right over there, Ms. Jordan Lee Lo, who is the executive director of the Human Relations Commission, and I love this city. That's why I'm here. So I have some questions for the record, uh, tonight. So who determines the commissioners? And these are in relation to some of the ordinance referenced tonight and potentially referenced, um, even more. So who determines the commissioners, uh, for the Human Relations Commission? Is it the executive director? Do they select, does she or he select the commissioners or make recommendations? Has the public been made aware of vacancies? And if so, how does that happen? And what is that application process? If there is a vacancy, is the public made known? What members belong to what political parties? What members have served consecutive terms? And are those things, uh, being monitored to be in accordance with the ordinance? Who appoints the board members and how exactly in relations to the mayor and you all, the common council of the city of Terre Haute? Do the commissioners meet appropriate criteria as referenced in the ordinance? And I do appreciate you all serving our city on the common council. Uh, I appreciate the time to speak tonight. Um, and I do just state one more question for the record. So if the commissioners or the leaders are not selected in the correct way, how can the system be just? Thank you.
My name is Donald Wayne Hyde. I live at 1411 Pother Street. This time I'm gonna keep it short because I can't believe once again I'm talking about this subject. I wish this would all go away, but COVID-19 has not gone away. I've listened to the television channels, networks and the state voice. They act like COVID-19 is over. I got news for you, whether you like it or not, it is not over. And it won't be over until the American people figure out what do I do to be a good citizen? Or maybe get a daggone vaccination. We're no longer talking about this is 2020, 2018, we don't know about it. We're no longer talking this is the, the May of 2020. No, we have had the vaccine made and they have been put in the arms of 200 million Americans, two-thirds of the population. And you know what? Unless I'm missing something, I haven't heard anybody dying from the vaccine. Not one person is dying from the vaccine, people. However, I've just heard on the news that we're now up to 900,000. Or 10, we're 100,000 away from a million deaths in just over two years from one vaccine. Now, the interesting thing is we were nowhere near, well, we were less than 200,000 when the vaccines were finally developed and said, oh, you can start distributing them. How did we go from 200,000? Oh, I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll be fair. How did we go from 300,000 to 900,000? With three vaccines, all of them work. All you had to do was go take the vaccine. Take politics out of this. I don't care if you're Democrat, Republican, Independent, I don't give a darn. Worry about yourself, worry about your family. Get the vaccine. Until we get not 70%, no, not two-thirds. No, I, this vaccine is like the flu of 100 years ago. We need 99% vaccinations. Only the ones that really put their health in danger from that vaccine, and that's very few people, people. I've got it, I've had it, I got the daggone thing. I got COVID-19 because I had the vaccine. All I had to worry about is getting rid of a fever and be bored stiff for 10 days. That's all. Now, if you don't have that vaccine, you've already heard two years where the horror stories. I'm tired of hearing them, so are you. But the bottom line is we need to come up with some way to get the last third of this country totally vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Lo. I'm the executive director of the Human Relations Commission for the city of Terre Haute. I will tell you, my job has been difficult. Since I have been in this position, things have been very unclear, very unclear. And when going and asking the question, it's always been left unanswered. I've read my ordinance, I know them like the back of my hand. I am not here to do anything besides uphold the law. To uphold the law, to do what's right. I do have morals. I do have values. And I do look at everyone in this courtroom. I am here as a voice for the people, the underrepresented. That is my job, those are my duties, that's what I signed up for. And as of today, as of February 10th, 2022, I am resigning as executive director of the Human Relations Commission. I am stepping down because of the unclarity. The people have spoke, so I have spoke. Thank you and God bless.
We'll close the public comment now. Michelle, is there any corrections to the journal of the preceding meeting?
There are none.
Communications from the mayor?
I did not receive any.
Reports from city officials?
I did not receive any.
Reports from Board of Public Works and Safety?
I did not receive any.
Reports from standing committees?
I know of none.
Reports from non-standing committees?
I know of none.
Any items previously tabled?
Special ordinance 42, 2021, rezoning of property located at 619 Washington Avenue. Area planning issued no recommendations and this was previously tabled.
We have a petitioner here that would like to speak.
You do, uh, Madam President, uh, fellow members of the council. Uh, my name is Richard Shagley. Uh, I'm with the law firm Wright, Shagley and Lowry. Uh, and tonight I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, uh, Next Step. Uh, as you may recall, I was here three months ago, uh, we did the initial presentation. I want to apologize to the council and at the same time thank them for their understanding. Uh, COVID hit our house in January and that's why I couldn't be here in January and that's why we had to table all these. I appreciate your understanding and cooperation in that. So, uh, you've heard a lot of what I was gonna say tonight with the Hickory House. Uh, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do that. Tonight, I'm just simply gonna talk about the hardship, the amendment in front of you and the best use of this property. I'm not gonna talk about, uh, the problem in our community. We all know there's a huge problem in our community with drugs and addiction issues. I'm not gonna talk about the success of Next Step. We all know they're doing a good job in our community. I'm not gonna talk about that they've been a good neighbor. Uh, I'm not gonna talk about the inaccuracies in the paper this morning. Uh, I'm not gonna talk about, um, I'm not gonna bring up all these people. Every one of these people, some of them came out during the Hickory House. They'll get up here tonight if you would like, or if you would just trust me, uh, and just believe that they will get up here and tell you that Next Step changed your life and saved their life. If you'd like to hear their stories, uh, I'd be happy to bring them up one by one. If you believe me on that, we'll just let them sit, um, and, and listen tonight. So I'm not gonna bring up, you know, in front of you, I, Next Step did a petition, they did a petition, we don't need to talk about that. But what I, I do wanna talk about is, uh, Mr. Lawellin made up, uh, brought up the hardship. As you know, for a plan development, you have, the first hurdle is meeting a hardship. As you know, um, I've been up here several times in front of you on different plan developments. And there's five hardships you gotta meet one of those. I have, through the years, um, I've been reluctant and have always avoided deteriorating neighborhood. I always go with mixed use or scattered use because in every neighborhood that we go into, there's always some commercial scattered or, and that's what I was relying upon this time because in Ferentz Grove, there is a mixed use throughout, whether it's R3s, R2s, R1s, some commercial, there, there's a mixed use in that area. I was hoping to slide through on that. Mr. Lawellin brought up the fact that we haven't met that criteria. So a month ago, I sent out the map that the Ferentz Grove District used when they applied for their status as a historical neighborhood. We color-coded it with what in our belief of, you know, condemned homes, homes that needed work and whatnot. You know, that was our opinion on the houses, really drive through the neighborhood, make your own opinion. It is our belief that's deteriorating neighborhood as, as a result of the harsher. But just to confirm it, I also reached out to the city and they were kind enough to provide me a list of all the houses in Ferentz Grove, that have been condemned or torn down. If this isn't evidence of a deteriorating neighborhood, I don't know what is. So I'm gonna leave it at that and we believe we have met that threshold. Again, I, you know, I never wanna stand up here and say your neighborhood's deteriorating because chances are if you're sitting in these pews, you love your neighborhood. And I don't wanna stand up here and do that unfortunately, uh, because they made it an issue, I had to respond. So I apologize, but there's our evidence of a deteriorating neighborhood. So the amendment in front of you, we started off in the process of wanting to build a building, which, uh, we showed you at the, uh, pre-decayed, uh, just south of the existing church. At the, the original petition was asking for the, the church to remain the same, had recovery cafe, the community room, the commercial kitchen and offices. And then add on a building to house 20, uh, pregnant women or near pregnant, you know, almost pregnant or just pregnant women and their children. Because of the opposition, uh, Next Step, uh, reconsidered and in that time, they were able to acquire property across the street. It is their intention to build a facility to have, uh, to house, uh, the women that they're intending to use at that time. Unfortunately, um, since 2012, when they're, when they were here to do the initial rezoning, when they were here in 2012, they had 20 residents and three employees. In 10 years, they have 45 residents and 15 employees. With these additional 20 women and, and children, they're anticipating a five to seven more, um, uh, employees. And, and what that does is, think about And what that does is, think about your kids when they went through school. Do you want your kid in a classroom with 50 kids and one teacher? Or do you want them in a classroom with 10 kids and one teacher? That ratio, the smaller, the higher ratio of staff to residents is one of the things that makes Next Step so successful, is because there's constant contact, there's constant communication, the people know each other, and they, they help, they help, they help people reach Next Step. And that's what this is all about, recoveries of several steps, and Next Step's a part of that process. So, as a result, we filed an amendment, you have it in front of you, and what we're asking for is a similar-sized building, one story. We intend to put a barrier between the neighborhood of the South, whether it's shrubbery or a fence, it's our intention to work with that neighbor to make sure that both neighbors are as happy as possible. In the front, there's a little smoking area, it's their intention to kind of tuck it down in the corner and to fence it in, so it's kind of out of sight. And all of that is in hopes of your agreeing and your accepting this. What they're proposing, the new building, is just some offices, a conference room, and a couple of meeting rooms. Right now, their offices, they've got two people in an office, and you can't do one-on-one counseling with someone sitting there working. So, that person, that second person, has to go out in the hallway and wait till the counseling's over, and so they're not able to do any work, it's just, they need more space. They've grown because the problem continues to grow, and that's why they're here tonight, so they are allowed more space. There's also, as you can see, there's, they're intending to, instead of fencing in the entire lot too, which is currently the vacant lot, to allow for the green space, so when you drive by, it's just not a fenced-in backyard, a complete lot. That's why they're intending to either put a fence just along the property line with the South property owner or shrubs, so that way, it leaves a green space on the property. So, that's what, that's what the amendment is in front of you this evening, and that's what we would hope, that's what Next Step would hope you would approve this evening for 619 Washington, the best use. Really, all this boils down to is, what's the best use for this property? This was a church that sat empty and decayed. Next Step, through what, whatever vision, I can't imagine that process, said, this is going to be what we will use. They acquired it, they put over half a million dollars into it, they saved that church. So, it went from a church to now their ministry of saving people's lives. You know, it's basically the same purpose. Before, there was a, you know, there was a priest with a flock that they tried to save and take down the right path, and we have that same thing with our director and taking people down a path of recovery, ultimately saving lives. So, so basically, it's just going to continue to be a church, just a different type of church. And we believe this is the best use for this property, and as a result, we would ask that you please rezone this property, R2 Plan Development, with the proposed amendment in front of you. All they're asking for is some room to help them, to help them help people, which ultimately helps our community. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. If you don't have any questions for me, I would like to bring up one person to speak. Like I said, we're not going to have the stories, but I would like the Executive Director to come up. She was not able to attend the December meeting, but I think it'd be important you to, for you to hear from her this evening and hear her story and tell you a little bit about Next Step.
Thank you, Richard. Hello, my name is Dana Simons. I am a Farrington Grove homeowner, I live at 1411 South Center Street, which means my backyard is directly opposite this vacant lot. When I walk out of my house, I see the vacant lot. I apologize to all of you for the contentiousness, for having, I'm sure you're sick of Next Step by now. I have spent more time on this than I ever cared to, and I really appreciate your jobs and what you do. I will never do what you do, because, boy, what a job. So, thank you very much. I've listened to all my neighbors over the last several months, the neighbors that love us, the neighbors that have given us property, the neighbors that support us, and the neighbors that are opposed to this. I came here in 2012 to ask for a plan development, R2, because my neighbors didn't want me to do an R3, because they didn't want to open the door for a fraternity if we failed. I, we agreed with that. I don't know anything about zoning, so I'm like, fine. R2 Plan Development to be a recovery center for 20 women to live in a church, and that was approved unanimously, there was no one here. The last thing that somebody at the city council said to me was, why did you only ask for 20? And I said, well, I thought that's all you'd approve. And they said, well, we hope to see you back here asking for more. So, here I am, 10 years later. That was the last thing I heard, last time I was in this room talking to the city council. And I hope tonight is really my very last time. One thing I want to do is really make sure I tell you the Next Step story, that Next Step is a nonprofit Christian ministry. We are not Hickory House, we are not a commercial business, we are not an out-of-state organization trying to go in there and cash in on addicts. We don't need to make money. We are a Christian ministry, started by six concerned citizens that saw a need in this city and wanted to meet it. So, really, Next Step's story is, and I'm sorry if this offends anybody, it's a God story. I didn't go out there and plan to do any of this. This is not Dana's plan. When I, when we started this ministry 10 years ago, we literally had to do, we had 16 leaks in that building. When a thunderstorm came, we went and did bucket brigade at 2:00 in the morning. We knew where every single leak was. We had bats that lived in the sanctuary, we rented our sanctuary to Grace Community Church, they had to leak because guano was everywhere, we couldn't get the bats out of there. We had raccoons living in the walls, and we had walls bowing out and ready to collapse on us, and the bell tower, there was bricks coming down. We bought it anyway, right? Even though Link Hobbs said, I'll buy you something else. Why do you want to buy that old church? I said, it's because God, where God wants it. So, we bought the church, and in the last 10 years, we didn't grow this ministry. When my neighbor said, are you going to buy anymore? I'm like, no. If you would have asked me, was I going to go back to ISU and get my master's degree, I would have said, no. It wasn't my plan, it was God's plan. Five of the single-family dwellings we now own were given to, either given to us outright or the equity was given to us. We didn't, we couldn't afford a down payment. Who does that? What, what people give you the money in their home and say, for addicts? Maybe for puppies, maybe for Humane Society, but for addicts, to have a home, they're going to give it to you? And these are neighbors that had 35 years living in the Farrington's Grove neighborhood. I love my home, I love my pocket doors, I love my leaded glass window, I love that sanctuary. I came from California for that sanctuary, because it's so beautiful. And we've put a lot of time and effort to restore that. Thank you to the City of Terre Haute for a $300,000 community development block grant for community centers that they gave us to be able to do the brickwork. Thanks to the donors that have stepped up. We didn't plan to grow, we just wanted to help. It's all we wanted to do, was take, we have, we had 20 women living there for five years, my husband and I, and a volunteer, because we couldn't afford salaries for six years. It was a labor of love, it's a ministry, it's God's ministry. And I sometimes forget that, and I, and I say things like, we're not going to expand, we're not going to do this. I'm not saying that anymore. God's going to do whatever God's going to do. He's going to move people's hearts to give us properties, and then what we've done is invest in those and save those and, and, and create something out of those. We're financially supported by 14 different churches, the largest churches in the City of Terre Haute. We're in their mission budget. We are considered missionaries, we go to their mission banquets. We are a church, we do everything a church does. We, I don't know if my neighbors even know the name of all our homeless neighbors that push the carts. We worry about them when it's cold, they come by for coffee in the day. We have, you know, my husband and I own our home, and we own a duplex across the street. And the only reason we bought that duplex was because the landlord, they were running dope out of it, and we watched them stop, and we're right next door with people trying to recover. So, we called and complained and complained, would you get them out of there? They're running dope through that house. They wouldn't do it. We bought it from them, and we had to gut that place because it was a methamphetamine lab. What did that street for me? They, they'll tell you, wherever dope house is in that neighborhood, there are addicts in our neighborhood, the question is whether they're going to be cared for and allowed to live in a family environment. You know, people say, Todd says to me, why, move somewhere else, get out of Farrington's Grove. There is not only an opioid epidemic going on in this country, there's another epidemic, the epidemic of losing national landmarks, of losing historical churches. I get calls all the time from historical churches, turn of the century churches, how did you save it? Where'd you get the money? What are you using it for? Who repurposes these churches and makes them back into being a hive of activity? I hope you guys come. Thank you, Congress, you know, Councilperson Elliott, thank you, Councilperson Garrison, for coming and visiting us, walking the neighborhood, seeing our properties. That's all we ask you to do, is understand, if I were the pastor, I'm the pastor of Next Step, right? If I, if I was the pastor of the Washington Avenue Presbyterian Church, and they have this ugly, we call it the bunker, this thing they added in 1965 that has nothing to do with a historic neighborhood, faces the street and is ugly as all get out. I don't think, if I were here saying, I need to add on a Sunday School wing because my congregation has grown, I need to add on a daycare wing, would there be even anybody here objecting? Would anybody even care that a church was adding on? Churches do that all the time. My staff, I, we went from no employees for six years to 15 paid employees right now because going back to school allowed me to apply for federal grants and to qualify for federal grants and for state funding. We are seen by the state as the model for the recovery model, right? We need more space to do what we do. We don't cram 100 people in a building and have three staff members like somebody, some other organizations do. We believe that they deserve to live in houses, we believe that they deserve to have access to care, mental health therapy, individual peer counseling groups. I need more group rooms so we can have small group meetings, they're more effective than 15 people in a room. And I don't want to tear up my sanctuary, I don't want to put offices in my sanctuary. I want the sanctuary to be used, what it's being used for, which is a recovery cafe, which is like a sober cheers. Sometimes you want to go where everybody knows your name, and they're always glad you came. Come on down on Tuesday or Friday, have some, have some wonderful homemade soup from our chef. That's what Recovery Cafe is, it's a place to meet and talk to people, and it's, and the belief of Recovery Cafes is that we're all in recovery from something. It's not about drugs and alcohol, we're all in recovery from something. So, let's get together, let's have break bread, let's have food. This is not about our desire to build a business, have a commercial business, destroy our neighborhood, there is nothing we have ever done. If you can see, where is, where is? I live right next door to that house. I live right next door to that house, we call it the Possum Hotel. My, my house is next door to that. There's a guy that called me in 2018, I didn't know him, and he said, hi, my name is Paul Thrift, can I have lunch with you? Okay. I don't know who this guy is. I go to lunch with him, and he says, God has told me that I'm supposed to adopt a charity and put all my effort and my company behind it, and I've decided it's Next Step. I don't know why he decided, I still to this day don't know why it's us. But he said, is there any real estate you need? I said, I need this church fixed, I don't have any money to fix this church. John Thompson came out, he walked through the whole structure, and he said to me, if I can get you 50 years, will that work? I said, I won't be here, so yeah, that'll work. And with their help, he's gotten me 50 years with that church. We don't have leaks, everything's been redone in that church. Paul said, is there any real estate you want? I said, there's this church, this house on the corner that's abandoned, and it's been abandoned, and we can't find the owner, and I don't know who owns it, but man, that would be cool. Look what they did to it. They put all their money into it, and then they deeded it to it. They gifted it to us and made an improvement to the neighborhood. God, only God would do that. Talk to Paul Thrift and say, go make Next Step, go adopt Next Step. God is on the move, not Dana, not Ron, God is on the move, and He cares about broken people, He cares about healing people, and that's what we do at Next Step, we transform lives every day. We see these moms and kids, right? We get to watch them grow up, we've got all these Next Step kids now, long-term recovery. Our community needs this, and Next Step can't do what we do without something very simple, a plan development, R2. Drop the 20 people, we always had that for 10 years. Fine, okay, you don't want 20 people, fine, we'll drop it. I need offices, please, I'm imploring you, let us do what we do well, and we will take care of the neighborhood. We've never done anything to make anyone believe that we would ever build something that would be a pole barn or something ugly. It's not who we are, it's not, we've taken every house and restored it. One of those houses that was given to us was lived in by ISU students, man, was at a wreck. It reeked of marijuana, and it had rats in it, and it was disgusting. We, our houses, they're supervised, there's daily chores and daily checks on those chores, and you can walk into any of our houses and they are pristine, any day, not like students. And Next, and Farrington's Grove is where we need to be. There's public transportation, we need that, we don't have cars, and there are jobs, I can walk to jobs, they can walk to the courthouse. We need to be in Farrington's Grove. Thank you, appreciate your time, and I'm so sorry that this has gotten out of hand.
Okay, we're going to move into public comment for those who have signed up on this sheet. We'll start there first, Mr. Donald Hyde.
My name is Donald Hyde, I live at 1411 South Center Street. Let's get it simple and get back to basics. The nine of you decide who to move to. The law says you decide who could move in or who can't move in. But it's more than that in this case. I'm going to be real clear on that to you nine people. You're not deciding whether or not they can open up or expand their business or their charity work, whatever they want to call it. I listened to all of it, again, as I did last. They have missed the main point of my argument, and I hope you do not. And all they're talking to, all they're right work, I'm not saying they're not doing right work, what they're wanting to do, I agree with. I want it to be something, I just don't want it to be there. And there's one reason that they do not mention, and it is the most important, important mission, reason of all. In this town, one of the best baby doctors is Dr. Desai. Now, you've already told me in all these questions I've heard over the last three months, that you're going to build, you've got the money for it, and you're going to build a 20-bed dormitory for 20 women who are pregnant with young babies. Never once have I heard you mention, oh, by the way, Dr. Desai, not Desai, damn it, Fafali, yeah, Fafali, is with us. Will you call her? She's next door to us. No, you didn't say that. You have not mentioned that if there's one problem with one of those newborn babies, you're going to have the ability to get that baby help within the time period that you'll have. Now, I'm an expert in first aid, I've been one all my life. I know that when things come up out of the blue, you have very little time to make a real difference. Where this place is, is Sixth and Harmon. Go that way south, you're at Regional Hospital. Go that way north, you're at Union Hospital. That's where the emergency cases would have to get to. Do they got an ambulance? Are they going to put them in a truck and just drive like hell and hope, break all the speed limits and get them there? But how long is it going to take to do that? And will that young infant survive? I have not heard one person come up and tell me, and I'm listening back here with you, that they got a doctor that can help a baby, a newborn baby at that. Now, get me wrong, they have a lot of people, and they're all here, and they have some young children, but again, young children, adults like me, I can walk away if I don't like what they're doing with me. If I, if I need something, and I really feel I need it, I can go do it myself because I'm an adult. What I'm talking about is, he's saying he's going to build this thing, and they're going to work with young women who aren't married, probably nobody cares about them at all, I've got no problem with that. But I want them to build their hospital, their little place, so that kids, if something happens to one of those babies, it's less than five minutes to get them to where they could be staying, where they could be treated. Is there a doctor going to show up at least once a week to check on the babies? Are you going to take the babies, the newborn babies, and make sure that they're healthy? Is something... If something happens, the world, I don't, I cannot deny that the world has got to do this. They go out and check on the baby, make sure it's healthy. Are they going to do that? Are they going to allow it to happen? I've heard none of that in three months. And that's why I'm upset right now. Don't get upset this whole time, but I do get upset by this. And you nine people are going to decide. It's one thing to have adults. They can get up and they can go get help for themselves if they really need it. If they really need it. Those newborn babies can not. That's the problem. Until these groups come up with a solution to that problem, my answer as a citizen in this city is no, you cannot build your place where you want to build it. Not because of its historical significance, not because of how great the building is. No, no. It's how far it would take, how long it would take to get that newborn baby help when it needs it. And by God, don't tell me with 20 newborn babies that at least once a month, there's not going to be a problem arise with them newborn babies where they're going to need help. That's what my reason for not voting for this it would be and to tell you not to vote for it. They need to build it closer and they got the money? They told you they got the money to build the thing. Build it across the street from Regional Hospital. Build it across the street from Union Hospital. Build it near, build it across the street from Union Hospital or near Union Hospital. You can also walk these young teenage mothers who have trouble to Catherine Hamilton. They could get help when they need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Jenkins.
My name is James R. Jenkins and I own the property and I reside at 1515 South Sixth Street. I'm here in opposition. I'm not in opposition to a principle, an idea, a particular philosophy or ministry. I'm not here in opposition to an organization, a group or any individual. I'm here in opposition to a rezoning of a piece of property. That's it. Zoning was created, as you know, because we as a community wanted to determine where we would live, where we would do business, where we would conduct manufacturing, where we would entertain, all sorts of different things that human beings do. And we like to do them and we decided as a city, as a community, to do them in certain areas and we would zone those areas and we provide those zones by code. This body agreed to it. Farrington Grove has been rezoned enough. Enough exceptions have been made in Farrington's Grove to this zoning code. We have businesses. We have lawyer's offices. We have abstract offices. We have the only mosque I knew of in Terre Haute. We have the only Jewish temple in Terre Haute. We have Club Gobi. We had Club Soda at one time. We have rehabilitative services. We started out, Farrington Grove was R1. It was a neighborhood. It was an area in which to live, not to conduct business, to entertain, to have manufacturing, et cetera, et cetera. And we keep undergoing rezoning, which is changing the flavor of the place where we choose to live. The last time I was here, it was suggested I don't understand. Well, I understand. I understand full well. I've served at the county level. I've served at the city level. I've engaged in these negotiations, these discussions right here in this very room. This is nothing that happened back then, too. It's difficult to tell your children and your constituents no. But that's why you were elected, because in some instances, you're going to have to tell your constituents no. And this evening, I'm demanding that you tell some of your constituents no. No, we're not going to continue to rezone Farrington Grove Historical District. We're going to try to help it retain its flavor as a living neighborhood. And you're going to tell your constituents, abide by the agreements you yourselves made 10 years ago when it was rezoned. And in that agreement, it was stated by the director herself and by the organization, that lot will remain a green space, a green area. I don't see much more argument here. There are other places to conduct the ministry. It's very well-known. Other places have been proposed. Farrington Grove has had enough. We've been rezoned enough. We're not against anybody. We're for you continuing the zoning code as it exists and enforcing the zoning code as it exists. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Nathan Hawkins.
My name is Nathan Hawkins and I live at 908 South Seventh Street. I was born 17 years ago today and since then I have been a continuous and proud resident of Farrington's Grove. I have always been fascinated by my neighborhood's history and architecture and I am very passionate about maintaining its unique residential character. As a result, last fall, when Next Step announced their intention to construct a new facility adjacent to their church, I became concerned. While I will always commend Next Step's renovation of the church and some of the surroundings, there is a logical point in my mind at which the size of their facility begins to negatively impact the surrounding residential area. And in a larger sense, I greatly fear that the dormitory project would be the catalyst for a more drastic expansion in the future. After all, as long as Next Step is a profitable business, there will be a continuing need for more space. At the December 2nd council meeting, I raised concerns that 1320 South Sixth Street, the corner opposite from Next Step's church, would be a prime location for further enlargement. In recent weeks, my fears have been validated. As you are probably aware, Next Step has since announced that they intend to construct a dormitory on that property and have changed the SO-42 plans to office space. A proposed structure on 1320 South Sixth would face virtually no limits on size, footprint and design. I cannot begin to think of all the detrimental effects that even a modest structure on that corner would have on the surrounding neighborhood. For example, I cannot realistically believe that street parking would be adequate for a facility with three major buildings. What historic homes will then be torn down to build a lot? How much traffic will be directed down that quiet block of Sixth Street? A responsible neighborhood business would certainly take these concerns into account when deciding whether or not to expand. But frankly, I have lost faith that Next Step will listen to the community. The events in recent months have shown me as much. What a long way things have come since 2019, when the Neighborhood Board was told that Next Step had no plans of expanding beyond the church. Your decision tonight will set a precedent that will continue to affect our neighborhood for years to come. Approving SO-42 sends an obvious message that further commercial expansion in the heart of Terre Haute's oldest neighborhood is okay. I urge you to please vote no on Special Ordinance 42. And before I go, I wanted to comment on that demolition list because, as I've said, you know, I'm very passionate about the happenings in the neighborhood and I'm very aware about demolitions that occur because it hurts every time a house comes down. You know, I care about those historic structures and I just, I want to know, I'm not denying the legitimacy of the list, but I mean, is that, are those properties that were demolished in the last five years or the last 10 years or the last 50 years? Okay, can I see?
I think it might be the highest flat.
Yeah, I think it might be the highest flat. There it is.
You got a plot there.
Yeah.
And a lot over the last five years.
And how many more?
Oh, every day I think you could probably put one on the condemned list.
No, I'm talking about before five years.
Oh, even more. I mean, this has been going on since during your application.
What does this show?
This shows, you got to read out Nathan one more.
There's, we need to stick to like Nathan speaking at this point. Thank you.
Well, that's all I have to say, but thank you for listening.
Eileen Prose.
Good evening. It's good to see all of you. As you said, I'm Eileen Prose and I live at 1438 South Center Street. I've been a resident of Farrington Grove for more than 51 years and I have seen the insidious effects of rezoning. Please stop rezoning.
Hello, good evening. I emailed earlier today, but I figured that you may have been busy and had not received it in time, so I wanted to drop in and share my feelings. My name is Marissa Northam. I am a resident in the Farrington Grove neighborhood. I live at 1436 South Center Street. And I feel like when I walked in the room, I realized real quickly that I needed to choose a side of the room to sit on, which I felt very sad about because that's also the state of our country at this time. So my thoughts are, as a neighbor who at first was very concerned about the rezoning, in fact, I signed the petition against it. I was concerned about the expansion of it, the effects on the neighborhood and the historical value of it. If the first meeting had happened back in January, when your family suffered from COVID, I would have said, I'm opposed. The second meeting that was supposed to be on February 3rd, I would have said, I'm pretty sure I'm opposed. Because as I processed it and I thought about it more and more from both a personal and a professional feeling about it, I realized I didn't know enough and that wasn't enough to make a decision so important. I know I'm nobody, but I'm just saying, as a member of the community. So I went across the street. I ate lunch at Recovery Cafe. I spoke with Dana and I met several of the staff and some of the residents that were there. And I listened for two hours. My two and a half year old listened for two hours. And my mind was opened up to the fact that there was so much I did not know. And that's my fault. I moved to the neighborhood in 2012. That's when I purchased my home. As a single mom with one child, I watched the program open up. I celebrated its purpose, but in the back of my mind, I was concerned about myself. As they grew, my fears were, would this increase crime? Would my daughter be safe? Would my property values be affected? That did not happen. None of those things happened. I've recently had my house evaluated. It's grown by $40,000. I have never had a single crime incident, aside from some people taking some pots off my porch. Prior to their program coming, I had my garage tried to be broken into. I don't feel unsafe. In fact, I see smiles. They always are kind to me and they don't know me. They don't have to be. So what I'm saying is, is by not choosing a side necessarily, but just opening up our minds to the possibility that this is a green space that we're arguing over. And I love green spaces. I love my parks. I love to visit all of them. But at the end of the day, this is not a public green space. I'm not allowed to just go onto that property and enjoy it and have a picnic or something because it doesn't belong to me. And so I'm telling them that they can't expand this vital service that serves this vital need just because I want to look at some grass. And I understand that because I really, I really do want to look at grass and I really do appreciate the idea that rezoning does affect our neighborhood. But I think the problem is, is we found a face to put our frustrations of years of seeing the deterioration of our neighborhood, we found a face to put that on when this rezoning came up. And I don't think that's fair to the program. So as a person who's never struggled myself with addiction, but who has a father who is a recovering addict, has brothers who are recovering addicts, I see the value of that is more important than the other things. So if I can provide that safe neighborhood where these people feel like the neighbors are friendly and they can smile at you, I want to be that. I want to step up and be that person because I feel like that is what the community really is about. So I thank you for your time and for listening.
And I would ask, if you're wearing a mask and speaking, kind of speak up a little bit louder so that the recording can pick you up. Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Margaret Herdlick. I live at 908 South Seventh Street. And I'm going to start with some comments from Nathan, who was just looking at that list. It is a very dramatic list, but in fact, eight of those listings are on Eighth Street and one is on Third. Those are not in Farrington's Grove. Those are outside the borders. And then 11 of those houses are on Seventh Street. I do live on Seventh Street, but that's the very edge of the neighborhood. And 11 are on Fourth Street, which is the other edge, the very periphery of the neighborhood. So largely the core of Farrington's Grove doesn't have these condemned properties. And in fact, one of them is listed as being rehabbed. So the list looks very dramatic. I think it's less so in actuality. So I've lived in Farrington's Grove with my family for more than 20 years and I chose to, we chose to live there. We do love it there. Mainly tonight, I want to talk about what it means to be a good neighbor. And much has been made of the fact that Next Step has maintained its recent acquisitions, that they do good work in the community. And you've heard many people who oppose this rezoning express appreciation for all of that. But ultimately, this is not about anything other than rezoning. Going back to what it means to be a good neighbor. Being a good neighbor is also about building relationships and about building trust. And we've told you that back in 2019, the board reached out to Next Step to find out about their program. They came to a meeting and in addition to telling us about the program, the minutes reflect, and this is a quote, that they have more plans to expand the program and that the current number of beds will not increase. Well, we all know that since that time, they have acquired multiple new properties. Many of those are homes. They've also established the Wild Bash Valley Recovery Center at Fifth and Farrington. What's so upsetting about this to many of us who live in Farrington's Grove is that they have never once reached out to us to talk about this. Not once. So clearly, they've been expanding and expanding and expanding at a very dramatic rate, but without ever having a conversation with the families and other residents of this neighborhood. We found out about the plans to add on to the church from a Facebook post from the mayor. And then two weeks ago, the Farrington's Grove Board President received an email from Dana Simons about the newly acquired property that's across the street from Next Step. And the message said, and I quote, "We have been prayer walking the property across the street for the past five years." Well, in 2019, three years ago, they told us that they had no plans to expand. So those can't both be true. So good neighbors, they don't lie to each other about major changes, which will have permanent consequences for the whole neighborhood. They also don't put up giant signs advertising their businesses when their zoning is out of compliance. Frankly, that just smacks of arrogance. At the last city council meeting, we were told that code violations are complaint-driven. Yet, when two residents called to ask about the size of the signs, they never even got replies from the city. Today, I learned that the signs are apparently too big and too numerous. If you drive around, you will not see other signs like that way up high. But the city apparently issued a permit anyway, which leaves us all scratching our head a little bit about what's going on. which leaves us all scratching our head a little bit about what's going on there. Good neighbors remember and keep their promises. The recorded version of Special Ordinance forty-two from two thousand and twelve clearly states, and I quote, "The south side of the property shall remain green space." Let's be clear. Next Step is reneging on that regardless of whether they build a dorm, office space, or swimming pool. Trust, it's a fragile thing, and the fact is that many residents in Farrington's Grove no longer trust Next Step to keep its word. They've called us nindies despite the fact that we've consistently focused only on the dangerous precedent this rezoning would set. And the impact that Next Step's rapid and very large growth could have on neighborhood density, traffic, parking, and signage, not to mention, again, the fact that other businesses may use this rezoning in the future to attempt similar ordinances. At the last city council discussion, I was struck by a comment from Next Step supporter. He asked, "Which is more important, people or buildings?" And tonight, we heard similar comments. That, it's kind of indicative of the Next Step mindset. They, they're on a crusade. Okay. You know, this is their vision. And they're backed by really rich people, like Paul Thrift, and large organizations, and we can't compete with that. And as a homeowner, that makes me feel really helpless because I want to be a part of the conversation, and I think I have that right. I put a lot into my house, walking around my neighborhood. So, you know, we don't have the money to hire a lawyer to put in lots and lots of hours. So we've, and despite what we just heard about this being about green space, no, it's not about, we're not fighting over a green space. We're fighting over zoning, and that's the issue. That's what they say. The answer, of course, to that question, which is more important, people or buildings, is, the answer is that we don't have to choose, right? And the answer is, they're both important. Next Step has other options available to them. Thank you. "We have repeatedly asked for you to respect and uphold the zoning code, and we are losing faith in city government." Is this working? Okay. You've heard Next Step weave an amazing narrative tonight, and I want to reassure you. You've heard lots of stories tonight, and they're emotional, and I get that. But my life also has been touched by recovery. And the fact is that all of us support recovery. All of us support homeless people being housed. Next Step has said, "Well, we've been given these properties. Isn't it wonderful? And we really didn't plan it." Right? But they've had choices every step of the way about how to interact with the neighborhood and about where to put their services. They could have sold those houses and used the money to move elsewhere. They have a van that I see parked there all the time. They could easily find other locations to build some of these structures and use their shuttle bus. So our neighborhood doesn't have to absorb all of this, and we can't afford more rezoning of this nature. So please make us feel heard and show us that our historic neighborhood and our efforts are valued by voting no on Special Ordinance forty-two tonight. And thank you so much. I know I went long.
Carrie Youssef. If I pronounced that right, I'm sorry or wrong. Sorry. Youssef, yes.
My name is Carrie Youssef. I live and own the house at eight two four South Fifth Street in Farrington's Grove Historical District. First, I want to briefly counter many of Next Step's specious claims. Their fraudulent online petition, their canned, cut-and-paste emails, the repeat calling of Next Step as a community center, their offensive, inaccurate, and discriminatory map, which of course you have blown up through. By the way, this map dates from nineteen eighty-six, and if you thought all night with the help of my neighbors, I could go through a number of inaccuracies. The vacant lot next to my house is a garage. The house across the street that has been coded obvious disrepair is currently being restored by Indiana Landmarks. A house that is coded modern structure dates from eighteen eighty-six. I will not go on. The map is inaccurate, and it is discriminatory. It is someone who doesn't know the neighborhood driving around making judgments. Their testimonials from residents, I see they're also up there, which are cut and pasted from letters of support for the failed Thrive grant. They do not address the specifics of SO forty-two. Their list of supporters also up there, nearly all of whom either directly, personally, or professionally benefit from the Next Step expansion. And importantly, many of them do not live in Farrington's Grove. Their portrayal of SO forty-two as an issue of recovery, SO forty-two is a petition to rezone. It's about land use. Their narrative of how they have fixed up houses in the neighborhood, also on one of the panels, when on the contrary, the majority of the houses they own were already in good condition when they took possession. They are not restoring the neighborhood. They are profiting and taking advantage of it. And I need some water. Their claim that they saved the church, the repairs on the church were paid, as we just heard, three hundred thousand dollars, in part with redevelopment funds. The city taxpayers, and in fact, the taxpayers of Farrington's Grove Historical District helped save the church. And finally, their slanderous claim and dismissal of Farrington's Grove Historical District Neighborhood Association, an association in existence and working to preserve the historical and residential nature of the neighborhood since nineteen seventy-six. The residents of Farrington Grove Historical District have clearly articulated their opposition to SO forty-two. You received scanned copies of the neighborhood petition with individual handwritten signatures, physical addresses, and contact information. This petition has over one hundred signatures, which document united opposition to SO forty-two. And as Mr. Dice has shown, the bulk of these signatures come from property owners and residents immediately surrounding Next Step properties. You have also received numerous emails over the last ten weeks, not cut and past, but written by an actual resident of Farrington's Grove Historical District, in their own words, with their own arguments. You've received numerous phone calls and messages, also not canned, but expressed by Farrington Grove residents who do not support new construction. And Ms. Simons is absolutely incorrect. Farrington Grove Historical District does not support new construction on Lot Two of any kind or for any purpose. Special Ordinance forty-two is counter to the goals and the will of Farrington's Grove Historical District residents. It neither preserves nor protects the historic residential nature of the neighborhood. What it does is expand one business at the cost of the residents that live here. Finally, it has been reported to me that members of area planning and city council have found my tone to be angry. I am angry. I am angry that area planning, that I call the city attorney's office and ask about clear zoning violations, and I get no response. I am angry that area planning sends its updated list of zoning and mistakenly sends the properties in SO forty-two before it has been voted on at city council. I am angry that I am standing before you once again arguing against a petition to rezone in Farrington's Grove Historical District that violates the rights and will of its residents. I am angry that in the last ten to fifteen years, if not more, the city and the city council's consistent neglect and their repeat refusals to uphold and enforce the residential zoning card. I have a right and a cause to be angry. What angers me the most, however, is this is my neighborhood. These are my neighbors, Mr. Jenkins, whom you all know infamously played hide-and-seek one day with my daughter so I could take a break as a new mother, two of my current students who live in a rental on South Seventh Street, who always say hi when I'm out walking, Margaret, who is a co-volunteer in the Neighborhood Association and a friend, my neighbors on South Fifth Street, who during the Father's Day storm of two thousand and twenty-one came out as soon as it was daylight to pick up branches, help move fallen trees, call the power company, check for gas leaks, organize coffee and donuts, and check on every house in a three-block span to make sure all people were okay. And finally, Mr. Gaultrey on South Center, who invited the kids and I in one cold afternoon to tour his beautiful home, including the Harry Potter closet under the stairs. These are the people who live in Farrington's Grove Historical District, the people who care deeply about the neighborhood and each other. And these are the residents who are asking you to vote no on Special Ordinance forty-two. Thank you.
Spencer Carlson.
Good evening, and I just wanted to echo, thank you for all your work on this and all the emails. And this has been up in a short venture, and we do really appreciate that. It's not the easiest thing to be between two parties like that, and we thank you for that. I just, as, my name's Spencer Carlson. I live at twelve hundred South Sixth Street in Farrington's Grove. I do want to just to, I am also the president of the Farrington's Grove Historic District, and I just wanted to just ram such a few things that you've already heard. And then I want to talk a little bit about some specifics, some specific issues with the hardship case that Mr. Shagley has made. But I want to start off just with talking about, again, just reiterating that the Farrington's Grove Historic District Board and our group, which is a formal nonprofit corporation in operation for at least, we figured that out the other night, at least like thirty-nine years. And we have paid dues, paid members, so this isn't some ragtag group of people who are together. So with that, and we want to preserve the neighborhood, but most, all the board is unanimously against the current version of SO forty-two. We are, the, most of the members of the district who are part of the paid members are, to our knowledge, are against it. And this has been our position since the very get-go, and that hasn't changed. So, and so, the issue, as the argument talked of, it's land usage. It's zoning. We are neighbors with Next Step. We generally get along. We have some times we butt heads. We do. And the work they're doing is a vital work. God willing, you never question that. This is just a different situation. The dormitory was proposed, and it's a different situation because if ISU was wanting to propose a twenty-person dorm or twenty-five, because it's more than just twenty because you've got kids, so that can make it twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, so it's not just twenty. And so, so, so if ISU or somebody else is wanting to propose that, we would be doing the exact same thing. So this isn't, it isn't a matter of, it isn't a matter of what type of usage, what type of program it is. It is land usage. You're putting a big dormitory in a residential community. And right at that point where that is, it's all residential. If you walk down there, it's all residential going south of there, and actually going north to some degree. And we've talked about the different, the possible issues with population density, traffic, and whatnot. So a couple of things to remember, the Viggo County Area Planning Department didn't approve it. That doesn't happen very often. I emailed Jared Baylor about that, and he said it was, and it was about roughly ten percent of all cases don't get approved. That should be, that should, all right, okay, I got to stop, got to think about this. There's something going on here. We have, the petition was over a hundred, a hundred people signed against that. That's a lot of people. And I don't know if you've ever seen that in all your time here. So that's the level of opposition against the current version of SO forty-two. And it doesn't meet the hardship requirements. So I want to talk about that in a little more detail than what's been done. In the condemnation map or listing over there, and all the houses that have been torn down, because their houses have been torn down, it's a good thing. It's a good thing. When Mayor Pete up in South Bend, he tore down a thousand, a thousand houses, I heard a comment from somebody who lived there, heard about it from somebody who lived there, and he said it changed things dramatically. And imagine if Terre Haute, we took all the lousy properties, all the factories that are no longer occupied, and they were torn down. Would that lift everybody's head up here and just say, "Oh, man, we've gotten rid of all this garbage in the neighborhood." So taking away, so getting rid of homes is not a bad thing. It's a good thing. And it's also a little bit of a function of a city where a population has declined fifteen, twenty percent. You're going to have empty places, just as a result of that. And so, so it's not a bad thing. If you walk directly south of the church, the homes are fine. Mine gets some different, I would choose a little different paint color in a few of them. You know, so, but so, and I want to get a little more specific here. I know of at least four big, older homes that have gotten completely painted on the outside. They're homeowners. I know of, well, one is like a duplex. I know of four homes rehabbed and flipped to single owners. If you're at the Farrington's Grove Historic District meeting on Tuesday night, great news. Two Bed and Breakfasts are targeted to open up in the neighborhood at the end of the year. One's going to be in the old Viggo County Historic District, one in the Women's Department Club. You don't put a brand-new Bed and Breakfast in a declining neighborhood that's deteriorating. There's another house, the Goldsmith House on Seven, where they're doing all that work. Fabulous job they've been doing all that. That's going to be another, I believe it's going to be another Bed and Breakfast. There's a house that, one up on Center near that little bend there. It's on sale. I know, I heard from somebody who we definitely know that it's pending. A three hundred thousand dollar house, it doesn't happen in a deteriorating neighborhood. One landlord keeps great pair, he's a renter, rents out to students. I know him personally. I've seen his work. He's got forty-plus properties. He takes great care of them inside and outside. This is not the sign of a deteriorating neighborhood. So, and Next Step itself, to your credit, Next Step, they've done a great job on their properties. You know, they've done a great job on them. And so this is just evidence, not just of a painting of a picture that's deteriorating of a neighborhood, but that doesn't tell the whole story. The whole story is, there's a lot of great things going on. There's a lot of great things going on. So that's all. Thank you again for your patience with all this, your time. I mean, I really mean that. I mean, everybody on both sides on this had probably felt that. I just, and you guys have gotten all kinds of stuff. We do appreciate that for hearing us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Llewellyn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Jeff Llewellyn. I'm an attorney with Wilkinson Law Firm here in Terre Haute. I'm here this evening on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. John Dice, who owned the property directly south of these two lots that are at issue along Sixth Street. And as has been stated, but Mr. Dice wanted to make known as well, this is not about Next Step. The opposition is not about Next Step. We respect Next Step. We respect what they do, and we respect who they serve. This is a zoning issue. And I started out back in December talking about looking at the zoning code and applying the zoning code. That's your first step. You have to make a determination of a hardship. Mr. Shagley went to that initially tonight, and I believe conceded, if you will, that four out of the five don't apply to meet a hardship for Lot Two. He brought up deterioration as a new factor, if you will, for them to meet that hardship. So I'm going to go back to zoning code and look at those criteria specifically with regard to a hardship due to general deterioration of the neighborhood. That's how it's couched within the code. The code goes on to explain that that's a neighborhood that's blighted as determined by, as an example, by the Department of Redevelopment. So a governing entity, if you will, has made a determination that there is a blighted area, an entire, not random condemnation here or there over a period of many years. area, an entire, not random condemnation here or there over a period of many years, but that there's a specific designated area that's blighted and needs rehabilitation or needs to receive governmental funding or improvement, that kind of thing, that's not happening here. The Department of Redevelopment has made no such determination, the Department of Area Planning has made no such determination, the City Council has made no such determination. So, and the map, we've already heard the discrepancies of the map, and clearly, it's a map created by the petitioner in support of the petitioner, it's a very subjective map. Some of the categories that they list as color-coded to make it a bright colorful map to look like there's a lot going on is landscaping, minor improvements, those kind of things can be solved overnight, that's not deterioration, that's not blight of a neighborhood. So I think the map doesn't get the job done, the random condemnations doesn't get the job done, it doesn't meet the standard of your zoning code. So I would submit to you that the discussion begins at the zoning code, first of all, you have to find a hardship, and I think it ends right there. You can't satisfy and find a hardship, and you're gonna have to state within your ordinance exactly what that hardship is, if in fact you think a hardship does exist here to qualify for a rezoning, first off. Next, I want to turn to the 2012 petition that's been mentioned a couple of times, and I'm gonna take you back to December when Mr. Shagley started this discussion. And he essentially said, I'm not quoting, but essentially said, we're here with this rezoning petition to more or less reconfirm or clarify what we did back in 2012, this has already been rezoned, planned, developed. And I took issue with that at that time, and there's confusion, our zoning map shows Lot 2 as R2, it does not show it as PD, it shows Lot 1 as PD, not R2. But if you look at the actual ordinance that was passed back in 2012, Lot 1 is not described within the description of the, legal description of the property that's being rezoned. Lot 2 is specifically described. And what's most interesting about that, and it was touched upon by a couple of the speakers earlier, but if you look at the file on that rezoning, and you look at the Plan, Area Plan Department Staff Recommendation, their recommendation says they have a favorable recommendation which allows for a maximum of 20 residents, and then says, quote, "But maintain Lot to the south as green space slash side yard." So that was the recommendation of Area Plan, that Lot 2, the Lot to the South is Lot 2, should remain green space. When you look at the actual ordinance that was passed, it says that the plan development is subject to terms and conditions set forth herein, Paragraph C says that the south side of the property shall remain green space. So if we go back to what Mr. Shagley said, I guess I'm on his team now, because I think we are here to reaffirm or confirm what happened in 2012, that's exactly what we're asking, that Lot 2 stay green space. I found it interesting, and quite frankly reassuring, that that's how the code was applied last time around, and that's exactly what we're asking you to do again, is to find that Lot 2 be maintained as green space. Admittedly, Lot 1, I think, needs to be addressed, because I don't think it was properly addressed back in 2012, but certainly not described in the ordinance. And so you could, through an amendment, and I understand there is an amendment that may be offered by Councilman Nation, that describes Lot 1 and allows specific use for Next Step's purposes on Lot 1, but excludes Lot 2 completely from any change, so that it would remain as green space. And when we talk about green space, there are reasons for green space and buffering in a lot of different instances, but specifically here, the use that they're talking about, they've done away with the request for a dormitory and a residential-type use on Lot 2. Quite frankly, that was more fitting in a residential neighborhood than a commercial use is, and now they're proposing a commercial use, office space, counseling room, meeting room, nothing residential about it, but they want to put a new commercial building on Lot 2. And the reality is, it doesn't qualify, Lot 2 should remain a green space. So I would respectfully request you to vote against the petition as it's been admitted or amended by the petitioner, and/or alternatively, vote in favor of what I anticipate to be a proposed amendment offered by Councilman Nation. Thank you.
That completes the list of the public comment. I will ask, if there's anyone else that didn't sign that wishes to speak, however, I'd like to ask that if you have something new and/or different to say than what we've heard, and that you try to hold your comments to three minutes. If there's anyone else that wishes before you, Mr. Petitioner, that would like to speak on this. Mr. Kettman, step up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Kettner Southwood, live at 1638 Seventh Avenue. You know, they're talking about rezoning and doing all stuff for the properties, you know, I was thinking that if you had some extra money at times, you know, and you don't know what to do with it, you know, rather than spending a million dollars on granite in between the courthouse and City Hall, and, you know, and all this rezoning is like, almost from like a deterioration of neighborhoods in the city, well, why not tell some of these people that live in these blighted homes that if you clean up your front yard, the trash off your front porch, in your backyard, keep your grass cut, trim some of your tree branches down, you know, you would pay half of their property taxes, but they would have to do it for a year prior, and they would have to clean up their own yards, and then after the second year that they, or they, after they did it for a year, you would pay half of their property taxes. You would help them, you know, not have to pay property taxes, but you could lift up a lot of these homes that really need a facelift and a little bit of love and pride, and then people could see a transformation in their neighborhoods, rather than, you know, at one location, they could see, boy, they made a big improvement at that house, and they made a big improvement at this house, you know, but.
Thank you.
I could just make a couple of comments, I feel that are necessary. Deteriorating neighborhood is very subjective.
Point of order, are we going to allow the other people to respond to Richard too?
Oh, allow, if you keep your comments to a brief two or three minutes for each one, otherwise we could be here all night.
Yeah, just, just super quick, we, it is very subjective, what's deteriorating, but we believe you meant that if it's not deter, it's still mixed use in that area. This group applauds a B&amp;B coming in, that's a business, bread and breakfast is a business. But yet, this church ministry, they're saying is a business too, I just, and then Mr. Llewellyn talks about if it's really a blighted area, wouldn't the city come and provide funding? Well, we already discussed that, they received $300,000 through the assistance of the city through the Ocre Grants, so that has happened. City has put money in because it's deteriorating. And as far as the 2012 ordinance, there's no doubt mistakes made in that, that's what we're here tonight to try to clean that up. And green space, there's plenty of green space in this area, and we're not talking about the whole lot, just a portion of the lot. So I apologize for coming back up, I just thought there's a couple of things I had to say. I do appreciate your time. Again, happy birthday, Nathan, and thank you.
I would just say that in response to...
Can you please step, come to the microphone? I would just say in response to the bed and breakfast, both of those are taking
existing historic structures and restoring them and taking care of them. The Neighborhood Association has always been against this rezoning because it is new construction that directly contradicts the mission of the neighborhood, a historic neighborhood and residential. There is a huge distinction between the proposed use in SO 42 and a bread and breakfast in a historic home that exists. Thank you.
Okay, I believe...
Just quickly, a comment about the green space again. So if the church, if the ministry leaves the church, and another probably church purchases the building, right, what, not too many options there. By building that section, they're ensuring that somebody would want to use that church as a church and further the preservation of it for 100 or so years. Leaving a green space that nobody can use just so that somebody's yard isn't bothered by another building, I have two houses directly on top of me, that's what happens in a neighborhood. Leaving that green space without another building, as long as it's staying in historical value and it's being used for something purposeful and good, it is ensuring that down the road, that church can be used for more, because a church will come in, they'll put their Sunday school in, they'll do other things. So I'm...
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, and we're gonna stop after this one, we're gonna be done with public comment.
James R. Jenkins, 1515 South Sixth Street, it's not a church, it's a building. Secondly, the green space is gonna be R2, that's what it's, if you don't rezone it, it's R2. And if somebody buys the building again, they'll buy it with the understanding that it's a building, it's got 300 grand put into it, it's got an R2 space by there, and if they want to do something in that space, do it according to R2 zoning codes, or come back before this body and ask for a rezoning like we're doing now. Please turn this SO 42 down.
Okay, we're gonna end for public comment now. I'm gonna open the floor for council discussion.
Madam President.
Councilperson Nation.
Thank you. Mr. Llewellyn referred to my proposed amendment, you have that before you, you have received it via email before, but there is in one of the little piles, a three-page document that says amended SO 42, and it has some lines through the language referring to Lot 2. Working with the city attorney on this to get it formatted right and make sure that it passes the city attorney test, I wanted to get this before the council so that you would have a chance to read it and understand what it is I'm proposing. In short, if we remove Lot 2 from the equation, Next Step wins, they get to continue their use of the church with updated zoning, and everything is up to date. You'll notice that my neighbors and I are not trying to run them out of the neighborhood, we're not trying to run them out of that building, we're not trying to run them off, we're trying to limit new construction in the Historic District, and that's always been my objection, and I think I've been clear about that all along, whether it's for pregnant women or office space, to me makes very little difference. It's, it is in addition to an historic church. The other thing that this would do, if we pass it, is it would remove the setback, it would reinstate setback requirements. They asked for two variances in this paperwork, you probably realize that after reading it, one of them is from parking, there are different opinions on parking, but the short answer is, I don't think any of us want to see a parking lot built at Sixth and Washington. So allowing Next Step to be exempt from the parking requirements in our code makes sense to me, and I support that, and I supported it 10 years ago. One of the main reasons that there were no remonstrators here 10 years ago is because we all worked together, the attorney representing Next Step, me, and the council, and the neighbors, figuring out what the objections were, trying to get out in front of them, and we've successfully avoided this kind of rezoning battle, because everybody gave. Next Step needs to upgrade, I'm sorry, update their zoning on this property. Special Ordinance 42 would do that, even if we do it with my amendments that I've proposed. I also propose that we remove the reference to the physical characteristics of the real estate, and the real estate being located near the boundary lines from the hardship description. If we are only talking about Lot 1, then we're only talking about the church. The church has a legitimate hardship, it's a non-residential building in a residential area, that's a hardship, and that's something that the council has recognized before, it makes sense. The rest of them, frankly, do not make sense as characterizations of Lot 2, the big rectangular empty lot to the south, where they're proposing to build. Next Step would also lose if we pass this amendment as I proposed, because they will lose the permission to build on Lot 2 that the unamended version of this, and Richard's version, has in it still. The neighborhood will win, quote-unquote, if we pass this as I'm proposing, because the neighborhood will not see new construction on the empty lot right next to John Dice's house. The neighbors will lose, though, because we are going to watch the house across the street be torn down, and a much bigger probably building than would be proposed for the lot next door, built at the corner of Washington. What will that look like? We don't know. How big will it be? We don't know. It's, will it include a parking lot or not? We don't know. Will we have any say in any of those things? I do know that, and the answer is no. There is no mechanism in place for the neighbors, or the city council, or anyone else, to have an effect on what is built after they tear down the house at Sixth and Washington. It's already zoned R3, that will support building a building for 20 people, and it doesn't have to come by through the city council. This is our one chance to, in 10 years, to help Next Step come into compliance after a decade of growth, after a decade of expansion, and now we're being asked to help, and even if we say no, they will continue to grow, they will continue to expand. 20 clients 10 years ago, 45 clients today, 65 clients after they build their, the project to help pregnant women. These are, this is, this is good, I mean, you know, it's good for Next Step, but it's an indication of how fast their business is growing, and it's also an indication of how great the need is for their services. You know, we talk about the opioid epidemic as an epidemic for a reason, this, there are a lot of people who are suffering, and Next Step is doing an admirable job of helping those people. But it's a pipeline that is not going to stop delivering clients to Next Step, and my, the first, one of the first things I said to Dana when we started going back and forth about this was, if Next Step has reached a point in their business where they're ready to, where they have to build new construction, then they should be looking outside of Farrington's Grove. You know, Dana referred to a version of those comments when she said, Todd tells us to just leave, and of course, it's more nuanced than that, I don't want Next Step to just leave, I don't expect Next Step to just leave, but what I do want is for their impact on the area to not change its character. And I think that demolishing an old house, building a new building, which we wouldn't even be talking about if it was a month ago, because they hadn't gotten the house yet across the street... across the street, I think that that would, it would have been a, it's all the same answer in the end. The same answer is, the historic district is a special place, there is not new construction going on there as a rule, and when there is, I real, I, I have, I don't think I've ever supported the expansion of a new business into new construction in Farrington's Grove in the historic district. I've expand, I've, I've supported a lot of businesses in the neighborhood in the sense that when people have come and said, let us, let us put our, our real estate office in this building, or whatever, I have supported those, after consultation with the neighborhood association, after consultation with the, with the people who are asking for these things. I'm sorry, I think I probably rambled a little bit too much there. I'll stop and let other people talk, I yield.
Councilperson Devon, you had your hand up, I didn't know if you.
Yeah, I had my hands up. I was going to state that, yes, we do have two amendments on the table for this ordinance, and I expect that we are going to be discussing both within our council. At this time, however, I would move that we do amend Special Ordinance 42 as presented by the petitioner.
Second. An emotion made by Councilperson Devon, seconded by Councilperson Aller to amend Special Ordinance Number 42, 2021, as presented by the petitioner tonight. Are any council discussions?
Yeah. I, I would, I, I'm sorry.
No, she is asking.
Okay. Thank you. Part of it, just that I think it's a little confusing having these opposing amendments before, so I just wanna make sure that I'm clear and that the public's clear what we're doing here. So this is the, is the move and seconded by the petitioners, Mr. Shagley's amendments to allow for construction of a building for what's been described as office, primarily office kinds of purposes on that lot. To me, this particular amendment actually makes Special Ordinance 42 less viable, because it clearly is not gonna be being used for any kind of residential use there. Organizations grow, and sometimes they grow out of their space. And so to, it's one thing to argue about this in terms of providing services, but to disrupt a historical district for purposes of office space, to me dilutes any support I might have had for the other, although I will say that I find any construction on that lot to be, that is not consistent with an R2 purpose, to be questionable. So I'll just leave it at that for the purposes of this amendment, but I would vote against this amendment.
Anyone else before I ask for a vote?
Yeah, I, I wanna go back and speak to a lot of the things that were talked about earlier, rather than this amendment right now, if that's appropriate. Mr. Faly, do you have a position on the, our guidance for us on the hardship issue?
Well, I, there were three, I think, listed in the original petition, or the original proposed special ordinance. I won't give you my personal feelings on any of them, but I think there's certainly been evidence offered on all three of those items. I believe the staff report by Area Plan references what looks like at least one of the five that were offered. And generally, again, it's a weighing test based upon what the council determines on the testimony and evidence that's provided by the petitioner or those that are speaking against the petitioner. So, I don't know, I apologize to know if there's something specific you're asking me about that, but there's certainly been plenty of evidence given this evening for the council to make their determination.
I'm sorry, Eddie, can you unmask? Yeah, it is, Eddie.
It's me.
So, so does this, does this meet one of the hardships or not? I guess that's my question.
I, I'm not the determining body. I think there's certainly been, for example, improvements on the property, and Todd hit it on the head, I think, it's a church, it's a unique piece of property, or it's a unique building on the property. Area Plan talks about the physical characteristics of that lot, so the Area Plan, at least, staff report mentions physical characteristics being a hardship, and then obviously, Mr. Shagley's hit pretty hard this evening, the question of whether or not there's issues with the neighborhood. So you have three before you, I believe, depending upon which amendment you pick, that hardship's built in. So if you pass it, you're saying you agree with one or more of those hardships.
Okay. Mrs. Sidens, I've got one question for you, if you could come to the podium. There, there were two comments made about Next Step has other options, or, yeah, Next Step has other options available to them, but yet nobody has shared with us what those options might be. Does Next Step have any other options that are viable?
No.
Thank you. I noticed, I hear the comments about green space, but yet when I stand at the corner of that property, I see a huge amount of grass across the street on both the properties, on both the southwest and the northwest corners. Those are huge lots. I think that's the Holman property and the old Historical Society Museum. I mean, tremendous, tremendous amount of, of green space. I just, I just wanted to, to point that out. The Area Plan letter, the infamous Area Plan letter, that's talked about, about that being no, no recommendation, I did notice in the back of that, the staff recommendation was favorable. Staff recommendation was favorable in that, in that document. I don't know what happened at Area Plan, I wasn't at that meeting, and why they didn't take a position, but I know they didn't. And, and I've heard some conflicting things today. One of the comments being, tearing down homes is a good thing. Heard that. And then I also heard, no new construction of any kind for any purpose. So all that means in the long run is, you have these vacant lots that you don't want anything built on, and all that's gonna happen over time is your number of vacant lots is gonna increase as properties get condemned or properties get torn down. So it seems to me that the long-term viability of the area over the long run is, is in jeopardy because those two statements just don't, just don't mesh in, in my mind. And of course, as I look at things from the city's perspective, new construction is good if it improves the, the density of our housing stock throughout the city, where more homes are built, more assess valuation results without a significant infrastructure cost to the city. And this, this may sound a little far out, but if zoning, rezoning changes never did occur, all we would have was woods, open land, and water space, period. I wanna go through some of the emails that I received. And this person may be here this evening, I'm not sure I quite caught everybody's name. And this email, as far as I know, may have just come to me, it doesn't, didn't print out any other names. "I am writing in regards to tonight's rezoning request for Next Step. I've been a resident down the block from them since I purchased my house 10 years ago. Initially, I held several reservations about rezoning and even signed my name on the neighborhood petition and opposition. I'm gonna skip part of it. After a lot of reflection, I realized in the decades since purchasing my home here, which is about the same amount of time as the program has been here, that I had a lot of good intentions over the years to be more involved and maybe even volunteer as a way to give back to my community. Life gets in the way and provides many excuses for why I haven't been more involved. So I decided yesterday to attend their recovery cafe lunch, held twice weekly, to learn more and hopefully have my questions answered. It was eye-opening." Let's skip a little more. What I saw was a very different reality. I saw a well-run program with a record to prove it, strict curfews, routine drug tests, intensive classes, and rules for everything from behavior to cleanliness and service hours ensure that people feel supported and empowered. But the community support they receive is probably the most impactful, in my opinion. They aren't on this journey alone, sent on their way with no support. Once the program is complete, there are steps, and the staff range from job training, mental health counseling, spiritual guidance, and so forth. These are trained professionals. The Next Step program is recognized by the City of Terre Haute, the State of Indiana, and the Nationwide Recovery Program for its effectiveness and positive impact. If the Farrington Grove neighborhood can provide a safe and supportive area where those in recovery can heal and grow, where neglected and blighted homes are restored through donations, and yards are meticulously maintained, then I would like to put my energy behind that. I can't claim to love all people as a Christian and yet say, not these people, and not in my neighborhood. I can't claim to want a better world if I'm not willing to allow the hard work that's involved with undoing years of abuse and neglect that led to addiction for people in recovery. They're doing the hardest work of their lives, the staff are doing the hard work directing them, all I have to do is get out of the way." Council is a group, we received several emails from Farrington Grove residents that were in support of SO 42. One comment talks about the vast majority of Next Step residents don't own a vehicle. There are three major bus lines that they can use to get to their jobs that they are required to get. Walking or biking distance from local employers such as restaurants and retail shops located on Third Street is rarely available. Walking distance to the courthouse was, was mentioned today. Lastly, the majority of residents Grove, Farrington Grove is rental housing. There are many affordable options for people looking to stay close to the services offered at Next Step. I do understand the concern of this neighborhood, but a recovery home is not gonna make criminal activity rise. Not providing this service will make criminal activity rise. Just, just some of the, the things that, you know, I've seen in the communications that we've received, and I yield.
Any other council member for discussion? If not.
I certainly might give everybody else a chance to respond, I just want to say that I, I do have some other comments. I've limited my initial comments to the amendment only, but I would like an opportunity at some point to speak to those other issues.
Sure, let me make sure nobody else. Councilperson Garrison.
Can I have Mr. Shagley come to the mic? I've got a few questions, I'm not gonna get in a lot of detail, and I'll be brief if you can be brief. Just, I have a few.
I'll do my best, Congressman.
So Lot 2 is currently zoned, what?
R2.
And what can you do on R2? Can they?
Oh, it's beautiful. I can build duplex today. You know, Spencer doesn't like the colors down the street, we can go all kinds of colors. We can build duplex today. Then the beauty is, through an R2, there's that little clause that says, or anything in R1. And there's about 50 things in R1 that you can do. So I, I think, I really like the comments made about, you know, ultimately, Next Step is protecting this lot, because if it gets in somebody else's hands, someone else could build that duplex. You know, when they add on to this building, that truly limits who's gonna use that next.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, so in R2, you, you can do duplexes, two-family homes, and then anything in R1.
And then this, there's a, a rendering or a photograph, or maybe a combination of the two, right here. This building to the right that I think we've been discussing, is this, is that a revision of what we saw in December?
No, that is the same one you saw in December. As kind of was mentioned earlier, you know, this preparing and getting drawings done is not economical.
Sure.
And, but their intention is, this probably not as big, because they don't need to be as big, but it's gonna be, you know, they're, obviously, they're, they understand the significance and are doing the best they can to match with 180, an old church.
Well, I like that rendering, and I guess one of the questions is, will you try and match that, that architectural style, regardless of the size or whatever is built, if something is gonna be built there?
I think the only accuracy in this is, they will probably try to get a little closer to allow more green space on the south side. And I think there will probably be a fenced-in area, somewhere top end of that building for the smokers that are currently kind of more exposed.
Yeah, good.
Because all this is pending, plus the ground's frozen, so it's tough to do fences right now.
Right. And if this new construction happens in December, we talked about it, holding, it being a maternity unit.
Correct.
To hold 20.
Correct.
Is that still the plan?
That is not the plan. You know, as you heard, there's some opposition from the neighborhood.
I have.
Yeah, I, sorry, I guess I should have surprised you on that. And I, I wish I had a dollar for every time I heard a 20-woman dormitory in the last three months. You know, we, we heard the neighbors, you know, and, and earlier, Councilperson Nation mentioned we didn't reach out. I was in contact with Mr. Dice and Spencer. Some of the language you see in our amendment is because of Spencer, the medicine, the drugs you don't, you know, go hand out. I mean, I listened to my Herman, and, you know, the single story, we didn't wanna create a situation where, you know, people are in a second story looking down into Mr. Dice's pool. We understand his pride, we're, we're trying to be the good neighbors, reaching out and making that.
Okay, I wanted to bring that up and sort of answer Mr. Hyde's question, because I think in December we had talked about a lot of things like that, that have changed over the last two or three months. So that's why, Mr. Hyde, they, they weren't really talking about maternity at this location anymore.
And to answer your question as far as, you know, because of the, the time lag on this, you know, every group kind of has kind of a, a dream scenario, and they would love to get that piece of property across the street from them, you can't play on that till it's in your hands. And luckily, through God's goodwill, that's now in their hands, so it now allowed them to, to move that across the street.
Sure.
Because the key is, you know, this church is the hub of this operation. For all the homes in it, this is where it all happens, and it needs to be close. That's why they were wanting to put the, the, the women attached to the church, because it wanted to be a cost savings, because they could utilize the laundry room, some of the bathrooms, and the kitchen already set up. But now they're just simply asking for some space for some offices, so they're not as cramped, and they can do their services more efficiently.
Sure, yeah, and I saw that during the tour. With these changes since December, did this go back to Area Plan to re-vote?
Does it happen? No.
I mean, did it?
No.
Okay, so what we're talking about today is different than when they voted?
Absolutely.
In December.
Well, we had gone from, in, in December, it was 20. We heard the call, and I think I even sent out to, I know I sent one out to the council, and I think I, which, which I assume Todd would have shared it with everybody, dropping it a smaller building with 10 women. So I mean, we've been constantly evolving, trying to continue to be a good neighbor of the Farrington's Grove area.
Sure. Then my last thing, you know, when we look at rezonings, and a lot of these I've voted against, and, and. against, and particularly the last one for Farrington Grove, but I tend to look at what's surrounding and the immediately, immediate neighbors. And to the south, we know Dana and her husband live there, and then I think there's another unit adjacent to them, which I don't think would be affected. To the north is the structure we, a little, we talked about a little bit.
Yeah.
I don't think anyone lives there now, but, so that's available. The one on the corner is pretty densely populated, evergreens, it's kind of tough to see.
Yeah.
And then the historical museum on the other side. But I guess the one that I'm most concerned about is Mr. and Mrs. Dice, who live directly to the south, who we've talked about a little bit. And they live pretty close. There is green space in between, and I've thought about this a little bit, you know, what could we put between there to insulate maybe the visual, if that's not something they would like to see? Or a sound barrier of some sort?
I don't think sound's going to be an issue with it being office.
Well, just some of the emails that I saw where people were concerned about people standing outside cooking out or having a cigarette or something like that, that maybe would talk loud or maybe say the wrong word or something in front of their children. So I think it could be a bit of a sound barrier, and anyway.
To answer your question, Councilperson, I've spoken with Mr. Dice and his attorney, and, because when I presented him a copy of the amended petition, you know, I was kind of vague on shrubs or trees, because I hadn't, and it's my fault, I hadn't spoken to Mr. Dice, but it is, it is a petitioner's intention. If he wants a fence, we'll put up a fence. If he wants shrubs, we'll put up shrubs.
Appreciate that.
We'll work with him within reason of doing whatever he, whatever's going to, whatever's going to make him happier.
Yeah.
We want to, we want to be, we're neighbors. We want to be a good neighbor.
I saw some examples in French Lake, I saw this, and there were a couple other places. And then one, and I brought, I brought a photograph that, I want to put up. This is on the north end of town, right, the North McDonald's. If you're going through the drive-through and you're going around that area, you'll see these dense evergreen trees that are actually pretty wide, and then they'll grow, I don't know how tall they are, you've probably seen 20 feet or so. There's a space, it looks like, in between here, but I think somebody probably drove through that. But I think, you know, something like that, maybe in addition to a fence, would be a good block if the Dice family would be open to that.
It really all depends on what Mr. Dice would like and what's within reason.
Okay, well, that's, that's all I wanted to address.
Because again, as stated, Next Step's not going anywhere. We're going to be in the neighborhood. We want to continue to be a good neighbor and be part of this community.
Thank you. I yield.
Councilperson Devon?
Yeah, I just want to, I want to respond to something actually Councilwoman Crossen said, and I just wanted to make sure to address this. By moving to amend this, I did not in any way intend to dissuade you or make you feel that you could not speak outside of the specific amendment to the larger issue at all.
Oh, no, I just, I was a matter of procedure.
Okay, okay, I just, I wanted to make that clear, because I, of course, want to hear everybody and everybody's thoughts on this. I yield.
Anybody else before I call back on Councilperson Crossen? Go ahead.
Do you want to run the amendment first, or? I think like, I'll go ahead.
I didn't know if you had.
No, no, I don't have anything else on the amendment, but I'll go ahead and say, I just wanted to say that because there has been, Mrs. Simons, I think, used the word that, I can't remember your exact words, but you apologize for this. There's no reason to apologize for anything, but I will say that this is one of those cases where I don't think there are any bad actors. I think, and that's what makes it a very hard decision for the nine of us. I'm not impressed, I have gotten, I've gotten probably almost all the emails that everybody's gotten. I've tried to respond with at least a thanks, I got it sort of thing. I'm sure I missed a few. I've gotten calls, I've seen petitions. Many of those comments, I think, have been very civil and very constructive on both sides. I just want to say, though, I am, I'm not impressed, and I don't think anybody is up here, probably, by those comments that have alleged that the neighborhood will go to rack and ruin if this is allowed, or that somebody's child is going to suffer addiction because this is in there. And those have been few and far between, but they have occurred. We've also, on the other side, heard arguments, and I'm not impressed by those either, that the mission of Next Step or any other recovery program in general will be brought to their knees if this is not granted. In other words, it's a non-starter for me, for opponents on either side to speak in those kinds of languages. I have friends and acquaintances on both sides of this room, and I know all of them that I can see, and most of them that I've heard from in other ways are thoughtful, concerned, caring, active citizens. And so in voting on this, I have to make a decision, as do all of us. And I go back to, this is about the best use of this property and how it fits into the zoning area and our zoning laws. Especially now that Next Step is going to be able to accomplish their treatment goals because they have acquired a property which does not need any approval by this body or any other to construct a facility that will serve those treatment goals. I feel like that the need for this zoning change is negligible. The only thing I really feel like is needed is to do what Councilman Nation has proposed in bringing them into compliance with zoning laws with the good work that they're doing in the church building itself. I'd like to respond to a couple of things that Councilwoman Elliott raised with regard to the staff recommendation from the area plan. We, on occasion, get a staff recommendation when we don't get a decision by the area plan. Staff almost always give us some kind of recommendation. That's their job. They staff it, they look at it. It's area plan's job to give us a recommendation, and in this case, they did not. So I do not feel bound by the staff recommendations on this, because they are not the publicly designated decision-makers on that matter. Tearing down houses, I don't think anybody said tearing down houses was good. I think what Mr., I believe it was Mr. Carlson, said that tearing down these houses are houses that are a detriment to the community, that are maybe unsafe, unsightly unsafe, is important. And we talk about that all the time at council. There are not very many neighborhoods in town that don't have at least some of that issue. And so tearing them down can be good, doesn't mean that you think nothing should ever be built on there, but I would say that I would support building something on those lots in this kind of residential area that is consistent with the existing zoning. And that's, that's really the issue, is what is that zoned for me? What is that zoned as, and is the proposed building consistent with that? In this case, the proposed building is not consistent with the designated zoning. And the other thing, I think, there are two other things. One thing that's spoken really loudly to me, I would disagree that a hardship designation has been met here, but I also would say that I am persuaded in part by the person who is the residential owner closest to the property's objections. Some of you may recall that I voted yes on the Sixth Street Hickory House property issue a few months ago, and I, at that time, stated that I was voting yes in part on that property because it was an existing institutional building already there. And in this case, I don't have that situation, and I think because I made that statement at that time, the voters have a right to know why I might be making a different decision in this case. And I yield.
Well, we have on the floor, there's been a motion made to amend Special Ordinance Number 42, 2021, as presented by the petitioners. Motion was made by Councilperson Devon, seconded by Councilperson Oller. I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Discussion, please.
Councilperson Garrison.
I have a question. On this amendment, Todd, maybe you can help me, or Mr. Shagley, I'm trying to figure out, I guess I haven't had as much time with this. Todd, I know you put this together, and I appreciate that, and I did get it earlier today, but I didn't have a lot of time. So I'm trying to figure out, if I vote for or against this, how does this harm what you're trying to do here with this property? And the only thing I'm seeing is they're taking out the section, "will be attached." Does that limit that?
Yeah. I have not seen Todd's amendment. It's my understanding, it's basically, and this is an offer that was made to us in the very beginning, basically.
It's the same offer.
Sorry?
It's the same offer.
Yeah, it's basically, no new building on the Lot 2, but we'll let you keep doing what you're doing in the church. So it's only rezoning Lot 1. Lot 2 is not included.
Lot 2 is still R2.
Lot 2 is still R2.
And you can still do?
Oh, yeah, all kinds of stuff.
So with that, are you okay with this amendment?
Absolutely not.
No.
Next Step, you know, it's not identical to the Hickory House. You know, the Hickory House was a nursing home converted into a recovery center. This was a church that really ultimately is just another kind of church in what they do. It's another kind of ministry, and all they're doing is trying to add on a little bit to that same ministry. It's the same thing. They're just adding just a little bit of space. So if Todd's amendment, again, I have not seen it, but it's my understanding, Todd's amendment goes through, it's just rezoning Lot 1. Lot 2 will go back to R2.
Point of information, but the one that is before us for a vote is your amendment, not Todd's.
Correct, correct. That's absolutely correct.
At this point in the meeting.
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank you.
All right. I'm a little confused, just trying to get that worked out.
Absolutely. I think that's good to get it straight before we vote.
Yeah, I like to do that.
Yeah.
Madam President?
Councilperson Nation.
To go just a little bit farther with the, sorry, to go just a little bit farther with the hardship thing, one of the main reasons that I proposed, the amendment that I proposed, is because I don't think that Richard's hardship will hold up. I don't think that it's, that it's a fair or correct argument. I think that the only hardship that they have with property, with their property, Lot 1 and Lot 2, when you look at those five rules, the only thing that they have that applies is the existing structure on Lot 1 is a hardship, because it's an historic church building in a residential area. And that's why I'm trying to limit it, limit this rezoning just to Lot 1, because I think that that is, that that's real. They have a real hardship with Lot 1, with the historic church building, and the neighbors and I would like to see them come into compliance with the zoning code. If we include Lot 2 in this, yes, they will be able to build on Lot 2, the addition that they propose, but, first of all, they said they wouldn't 10 years ago. It's in the zoning, the actual rezoning petition that got passed by the council. And secondly, if this council is concerned with the legality of what we pass, then we should be thinking critically about these hardship assertions, and, I mean, and I don't think that the one that what Mr. Shagley's presented us with is real. Hardship does exist, mixed use in the area due to improvements on the real estate, the physical characteristics of the real estate, the real estate's located near district boundary lines, general deterioration of the neighborhood, and that a plan development is set forth in this neighborhood, et cetera. So he's called them all out, the, is it all five? And I frankly, I don't think any of them apply to Lot 2, but we are being asked to zone Lot 2 in addition to Lot 1 with this ordinance. It's confusing, I know.
It is.
And part of the confusion is because the two lots are, sometimes they're considered together, sometimes they're considered apart. I'm trying to separate them so that we're, so that we're, if, if the council went along or was to go along with what I'm proposing, Next Step would need to come back to the council in the future to rezone Lot 2 by itself, on its own merits, not tangled up with all the stuff they're already doing, and then we could have this discussion about what their actual plan is, not about what they've been doing and trying to bring into compliance and what they want to do, and, so it's confusing. But again, as has been pointed out, what's in front of it, what we're going to vote on now is Richard's amendment that would allow Next Step to go ahead and build their addition onto the building and ignore all of the problems with the hardship assertion on Lot 2. And that's where it's weak legally.
And that's when you say you don't think it holds up, that's what you mean, that it's weak in that regard?
That's exactly what I mean, and I mean that I don't think it'll withstand judicial scrutiny. The idea that, that if this ended up in front of a judge and the judge looks at this situation, no action's been taken by government to declare this area blighted. That's specious. There are no boundary lines near this. Just go down the list, the lot itself is a rectangular lot, there's nothing hard about the lot, or difficult about it, or different from any other lot on that block or in that area. It's a, it's a big rectangle.
Okay.
So, I don't mean to further confuse things, but the simple message is that if we leave Lot 2 out of it, it's, it's on much firmer legal footing. When we cute Lot 2 in it, it just gets all mixed up. I would like to see Lot 2 treated as a separate zoning petition in the future, after they build their new building across the street and determine their real needs. Thanks for letting me get in on your comment time.
Counselperson Devon?
Yeah, I can't add to anything that anybody else has said. All my questions have been answered, but my biggest concern has also been the legality of the hardship. And so I've spent a considerable amount of time today reading this ordinance and rereading this ordinance and trying not to read between the lines. But as I see it, and I may need Eddie to clarify this for me, the criteria says that one of the following unique circumstances has to be met. So there's no, I mean, just one of them has to be met, not, I mean, we talked about the five, but only one of the criteria has to be met for a hardship.
For one lot or both?
Oh, I'm just talking about the zoning that is before us. One criteria has to be met. What my hangup continued to be as I researched and researched and researched today was the hardship due to the general deterioration of the neighborhood, because that was really the only one that I could come up with that would be valid as a hardship. So what's deterioration mean? I had asked in the very beginning, when we first started talking about this rezoning, to get some data from, some census data. So Thrive was good enough to provide me with some data for the censuses from 2010 to 2019. And the data that they pulled for, I mean, was owner occupied versus renter occupied, and then on top of that, the total units in the area in the census tracts. And so where I kept landing with this today, as I was working through it, was in 2010, there were 3,046 total units in these tracts. 2019, there were 2,732 total units in that tract. So to me, where I was landing, as I was trying to formulate in my mind what my decision was going to be, was deterioration to formulate in my mind what my decision was going to be, was deterioration doesn't necessarily have to mean, you know, falling down homes and dilapidated homes. And that was how I, you know, justified my thought for determining, yes, there is a hardship in this neighborhood. So, I mean, with that being said, I just want to, you know, explain my mindset and my thoughts on, is there a hardship or is there not a hardship? And if anybody has any discussion on that, I appreciate it. I'll yield.
Sure. I've got ideas on that. There are over 1,200 structures in Farrington's Grove, over 1,200. It's a big neighborhood. Richard has provided us with a list of about 50 that have been torn down or condemned in recent years. To me, that's just the city taking care of city business. There have, you know, back in 2008, the market crashed, a lot of houses went up for grabs, especially the bottom rung, the junky rentals. Many of those houses were bought by out-of-town investors and banks, and then they didn't do anything with them. You all know Dean Branson. Dean tears down houses for the city. I've had a running conversation with Dean for 10 years about this, specifically in Farrington's Grove, because, because I've seen so many condemned homes, and wondered, all right, so what's the game plan on this? What are we going to do? Dean's answer is always the same. Dean tears down houses. And Dean held off for a while. If you think that you've seen more demolitions in the historic district in the last few years, it's because you have, like, say, the last five years. And the reason for that is that Dean's finally, at the end of his rope, he's just started tearing down the places that are the worst of the worst, and much of that has been cleared out. The, you know, there are tracts on 7th Street where half the block is torn down. That just happened, like, within the last five to 10 years, for sure. I don't want to get too far off track here, but what I do want to say is that in the determinations, in the five rules that we're supposed to be considering when we establish a hardship, the example that is given for general deterioration is if the Department of Redevelopment makes a determination that it's deteriorated or blighted. And that would be so that they could go and rebuild the infrastructure like they did up in the 3rd District for years. You know, they rebuilt all of Sheridan Parks, combined sewers and curbs and gutters and streets and sidewalks and tree rows. They did that over a period of decades. And then they finished it, and now they're in Amy's District, doing the area around the old Coke plant, a little bit north of Coleman there. Anyway, no such determination has been made about Farrington's Grove. Department of Redevelopment hasn't said this place is blighted, so we're going to go tear down all the junky houses. They're not in here doing that kind of work. And the government, there is no government agency that has focused on Farrington's Grove and said, this area is a blighted or deteriorating area. And that's what you should be looking for, not the opinions of a petitioner.
Counselperson Allison.
Todd, did you say in the 2008 housing crash, a lot of those properties were bought by out-of-town owners?
Yeah. Well, and then they, some ended up in tax sale, too, but a lot of what has been torn down, and, you know, the one that's getting ready to be torn down across from Next Step, is a good example of that.
That tells me we didn't have local demand to buy those. That's what that tells me. If out-of-town bought it, then we didn't have local demand to buy it.
It was a crash in a financially tough time. I'm not sure that people here in town were...
Well, I mean, if out-of-town bought it, then local didn't. So it's one or the other, out-of-town or local. That's my observation, is it?
Well, and that's real, that's real, Earl, but it's also, it's also been a problem for my neighborhood, and, you know, you may see this in your district, too. I don't know. But in my district, the activity around scooping up these distressed properties has been, has presented a problem, scooping up by out-of-town banks and investors. Ties them up.
And then the comment was made earlier, no new construction in the district.
Well, I'm sorry.
No new construction in the district. That's the comment that was made. And that's not viable in the long term.
You're right. It's not. And I think that everybody's message is, keep it housing, keep it residential, keep it on this, in, like Martha said, in the same vein as what's around it. Nobody's going to object to a new house going up on an empty lot, especially one that had a house on it just a few years ago.
If it doesn't match the architecture, it doesn't match the architecture, though, so.
You know, part of the heartburn that my neighbors and I experience is that Terre Haute is the only city in the whole state of Indiana that has not taken any kind of action to put rules in place that would protect historic districts. We're the only city, the only Class 2 city. Everybody else has done it. I used to be able to say, it was only us and Gary, but now Gary's done it already, or since then. So we're the last one. We don't have any protection. And what that means is that when the would be, well, let's use the current example. When Next Step goes to build their new 20-person development at 6th and Washington after tearing down 1320 South 6th, nobody will have any say over it, not any, nobody from the neighborhood. The city engineer will, in the sense that there will have to be a site plan that shows how far back they're set, and whether or not it meets those setback rules. That's the extent of the involvement, even though this is a National Register Historic District, this is someplace that we all acknowledge as a special place. There's no rules. So when you talk about the new construction scenario, there's not a, we don't know what we're getting from new construction. We don't know what we're getting, even despite the fact that there's a pretty picture, despite the fact that they're saying that, you know, they want it to match and all that. So much of that is in the eye of the beholder. There's nothing in any of this paperwork that says this is what's going to happen, and how it's going to look, and what it's going to be made of. It's nothing. And that's one of the big problems for the residents of the historic district, too, is that we just, since we haven't taken any steps, there's no predictability in it. It's just, it just comes down to this property-by-property argument that we're engaged in now. And I really wish we could avoid it. I wanted to avoid it right at the, right off the, from the start. I would, I would like to see this development happen outside of the boundaries of the historic district, period. But I would like to see it happen, because I believe it's real. I believe it's needed.
You yield, Todd.
Did I have the floor? I yield.
You started in, so.
You yield.
Okay, before we take a quick vote, Mr. Shagley, I just want to make sure and we're clear, and everyone is clear, so this can be a quick yes answer.
I'm good at this.
One, so Lot 2, the one they want to build on?
Correct.
Is currently R2.
Correct.
It will remain R2 if we would even go with Counselperson Nations.
Correct.
Correct?
If, I have not seen his amendment.
Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Mr. Amendment?
Lot 2 would stay R2.
And just, I want to clarify, so under R2, Next Step owns the property, correct?
Correct.
They can build anything that's allowed in just an R2?
And an R1.
And an R1, which could be a duplex or anything else.
Yeah.
Correct?
Or a mental house, mental health house.
I just, I just wanted to...
Oh, yes or no? Sorry.
To clarify that that is...
Or a church.
Without coming back to the council.
Yeah. Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Counselperson Bowlin, I have a question for you. On the census that you did, and I may have missed that part when Thrive did it for you, but you did mention single residence to renter occupied. Did they actually give you?
Yes.
Did I miss that part?
I probably didn't go into it.
Just real quick on what this, if they have that?
Owner occupied in 2010 was 29.1%, and 2019, it was 34.0%, so owner occupied grew. Renter occupied went from 70.9% to 66%, so renter occupied was reduced, but that's kind of skewed since the total number of units also was reduced by about 300. So somebody much better than I at math would have to do that calculation. But currently, in 2019, owner occupied was 34%, renter occupied was 66%.
Well, if there is no further discussion, again, I will state that we have amended Special Ordinance Number 42, 2021, as presented by the petitioner. That's what we'll be voting on. That is on the floor. The motion was made by Counselperson DeBon, and seconded by Counselperson Aller. Ask all those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call vote, Michelle?
Counselperson Aller.
Yes.
Counselperson Bowland.
Yes.
Counselperson Crossen.
No.
Counselperson Elliott.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Counselperson DeBon as well.
Yes.
Counselperson Garrison.
Yes.
Counselperson Nation.
No.
Counselperson Lautermilke.
Yes.
That is, that is, that's six yes and two no.
Counselperson Aller.
Can I, real quick, I just, so everybody understands what we just, we're just amending what was presented before us. We haven't had an actual vote. I just want to, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, there's a little, yeah.
Motion passes for amendment. Is there a motion on the floor?
Madam President? I'd like to move that we amend the amendment to strike the setback requirement, to strike the...
Zero setback.
The zero, the, under CA1 setback requirements, there shall be zero setbacks required for the property. I propose that we strike that. There's no reason to have zero setback on this.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
I move that we strike the setback requirements from the amended version that we just, that we just did. It's CA1.
Are you saying for both lots, or just lots, just Lot 1? Because if you... I don't even know how you move that church to make it, so you're wanting us to go get a variance to have the church an existing place for Lot 1?
As has been established, the church was built before we had zoning in 1967. It's 180 years old, right?
Yeah.
So, or whatever you think it is. It's considerably less old than that. The, when you, so it's an existing, conforming use. Nobody's talking about, it's not about the church. It's about whether or not there is a setback requirement along the south edge of Lot 2.
Oh, absolutely. As far as Lot 2 goes, they would comply with all setback rules.
That's not what this says. What this says is that there shall be zero setbacks required for the property. That's why I'm proposing that we strike that from this ordinance. There would be a setback on the alley. There would be a setback on the street. There would be a setback on the south side.
Due to their intended combination, that would restrict them from attaching the two. So a set, well, because if there's a six-foot or 10-foot setback on the...
We're talking about three sides, right?
Because right now, they're two lots. So if you do, if you require, just on Lot 2, the setback requirement, they couldn't combine the two buildings. So if the amendment was to require setbacks on the, ooh, help me on the directions, the south, the east and the west, but not the north boundary line between 1 and 2, that would be agreeable to the petitioner.
Hold on. They're going to have to combine the parcel anyway, if they're going to connect the building. So that, the setback in between the two lots doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's right.
Now, he may have an issue if he wants to...
I'm not talking about in between the two lots. I'm talking about to the, between the property or to the south.
But his concern was, yeah, you're going to combine them, so it's not going to be an issue.
Thank you, Eddie. So that's my motion, that we strike CA1 setback requirements. There shall be a zero setback required from the property, for the property. And I think that there's been a second to that, too.
Yeah.
There's been a motion on the floor by Counselperson Nation, seconded by Counselperson Crossen, to amend the amended Special Ordinance Number 42, 2021, as presented by the petitioner. That is to strike Section CA1 for the setback requirement. All in favor?
Call the question. One second. Sorry.
Counselperson Allison.
Got me all confused here. Sorry. So with this being done, it wouldn't, there wouldn't be a problem in between the two buildings, correct?
They're going to have to get rid of the line.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. So they're going to...
Yeah. It'll become one lot eventually. So that's...
So only three sides.
Yeah. Yeah, eventually, this will become one lot. They'll have to do that so they can build and connect. So, yeah. This is acceptable to the petitioner.
I was just making sure what we were, sorry.
Sure. No, I understand. It's a confusing thing.
It's been a long evening. Sorry.
And I hate to do this on the floor. That's why I gave it to you a week ago.
Ready to vote? All those in favor for the amended, to the amended Special Ordinance Number 42, 2021? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. President? There's no further questions. I move that we vote on the amended Special Ordinance 42.
I'll second.
Is it amended, or is it amended amended?
Well, that's what I'm looking over at Eddie, because I didn't know if I need to say amended amended.
Amended.
Amended, amended, amended?
As amended.
I'll second the amended as amended.
There's been a motion made by Counselperson Aller, seconded by Counselperson DeBon, to approve the amended, amended Special Ordinance Number 42, 2021, as presented. Petitioner? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to ask the council, would you like a five-minute break, real quick?
I support that.
Okay. Let's take a break for about five minutes.
The council, the council's going to take a five-minute break, and will return to finish the regular agenda.
We'll resume the City Council meeting of February 10th, from the postponement of the February 3rd, 2022 meeting, back in session. Next item on the agenda, Michelle, is there any tax abatements for confirmation?
There are none.
Any items on second reading?
There are two. Special Ordinance 45, 2021, rezoning a property located at 2224 Lafayette Avenue. Area plan gave it favorable with conditions recommendation.
Is there a petitioner present?
Yes, Madam President. Madam President, fellow members of the council, my name is Richard Shagley. I'm with the law firm, Wright, Shagley &amp; Lowery. And tonight, I'm here in front of you on behalf of Thomas Abrel. He owns a property located at 224 Lafayette Avenue, Terre Haute. That property is currently zoned R3 plan development, and he is requesting this be rezoned to a C...
C2 for a dental office. This has been a dental office for a long time. We actually rezoned it back in 2005, I believe, for this. Back then, as you may recall, it was a little more residential, so we did the plan development under this scenario. If it doesn't continue to be a dental office, it'll go back to residential. But as you know, Lafayette is booming, and it's going commercial all the way. So, he's here tonight asking you to rezone it to C2, which fits the classification for a dental office. I'd be happy to answer any questions, man. And last night, Eric Klein gave a favorable recommendation. There was no, I've not heard from anybody. There's been no, even through the area plan office, that there was anybody complaining about this.
Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, is there any council discussion?
Madam President?
Councilperson Garrison?
There are no objections, there are no further discussion. I move that we approve Special Ordinance 45, 2021.
Been a motion made by Councilperson Garrison, seconded by Councilperson Boland, to approve Special Ordinance 45, 2021. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Michelle, next item?
Special Ordinance 46, 2021, rezoning a property located at 916 Custer Street. Area planning gave a favorable recommendation.
Is the petitioner present?
Yes, Madam President. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm with the law firm, Wright, Shagley &amp; Lowery. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of Wires Only LLC. They're the owners of the property at 916 Custer Street here in Terre Haute. This property is currently zoned R1. However, it's got three one-bedroom units in it. As a result, my client's wanting to clean it up, so he filed for petition to rezone this to R3, which would be the classification for the three one-bedroom units. And presenting to area planning, there were some issues that required some variances. Those matters were heard last Wednesday at the BZA. They were all approved. As a result, last night at the area plan meeting, the staff gave a favorable report, notified the commission of the approval of the variances. And as a result, the area plan commission last night gave a favorable recommendation for you this evening. And again, there were nobody there last night in opposition, nor have I heard of any opposition from my office directly or from the area plan office. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comments, or any council discussion? Councilperson Crossen?
I just, looking here, and I'm not sure I heard you right. Did you say it has, it is and has been given you the three residential units?
Yeah, there's three one-bedroom units in it. And so, he's just wanting to clean it up.
How long has that been in the case?
He doesn't know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Some period.
Yeah, I have a feeling it was a weekend job, turning it into three units back in the day. I just don't know when that was.
I yield, thank you.
Madam President?
Councilperson Aller?
There's no further questions. I move that we approve Special Ordinance 46, 2021, as presented.
Second.
Been a motion made by Councilperson Aller, seconded by Councilperson Garrison, to approve Special Ordinance 46, 2021. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Madam President, if I could, I would like to thank you all for the time that you've put into the previous Special Ordinance 42. I know that's a lot for all of you, but I do appreciate the time you put into looking into the issues, and your willingness to listen tonight. I want to thank you very much. One last thing I didn't bring up during the 30-minute open comment, I know it's not on the agenda, so I'll go ahead and say it. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody, and I hope it's a good day. But thank you for your time tonight.
Michelle, next item on the agenda, is there any resolutions?
Yes. We have one more special ordinance. Special Ordinance 1, 2022, rezoning a property located at 1902 North First Street. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation.
Is the petitioner present?
Yes, Jeff Lind, Lind Law Firm, 400 Ohio Street, beautiful, Terre Haute, Indiana. I'm here on behalf of Innovative Communications, Communication Solutions for a rezoning on First Street. This is a simple matter, in my view. Property owner owns two lots. His business is on the south lot, currently zoned C2. He owns property to the north, it's zoned R2. When inadvertently, there was a zoning or a setback violation, he's now expanding the business and leaving open the possibility of further expansion. Wants to have the lots with the same zoning for his business. Received a favorable recommendation from area plan last night. A small twist, this property is on the west side of First Street, so behind it is the swamp and, or lowlands or bottom lands, and then the river. And there, just a tiny strip of it, not wide enough to build anything on, is zoned R residential. So, we've asked and obtained, subject to city engineering sign-off on site plan, a waiver of any buffer between residential properties, for the sole reason that my client would be better off with the buffer than the river getting the buffer. Any question?
Is there any public comment? No public comment, is there any council discussion? We will need to have a vote to take action on this, if you so choose.
Madam President?
Councilperson Garrison?
Can I call you madam? I would, I would like to propose that we vote on first reading, SO 1, 2022.
Second.
Been a motion on the floor to take action on SO 1, 2022. Motion made by Councilperson Garrison, seconded by Councilperson Aller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Madam President, I move for approval of SO 1, 2022.
Second.
Has been a motion made by Councilperson Garrison, seconded by Councilperson DeBon, to approve Special Ordinance Number 1, 2022. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, Michelle?
Resolution 1, 2, 2022, designating an area commonly identified as 2200 South 13th Street and 1260 Lockport Road, Terre Haute, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area for the purpose of 10-year real property tax abatement. This is for Hydrate Chemical Company for adoption.
Jeff Lind, Lind Law Firm, 400 Ohio Street, beautiful downtown, Terre Haute, Indiana, the home of crows, apparently. I'm here for Hydrate Chemical, as was noted, and there are two companion petitions, 2 and 3. Real property tax payment requests and first property tax payment requests, both related to the same project. There would be, if approved, plans include $7.2 million in new real estate improvements and $21 million in new equipment to, to Terre Haute. 14 new jobs with payroll of about $830,000. Starting wage on the hourly employees, $22 an hour, if I understood correctly. And anything I get wrong, this young man right here will stand up and fix it. Really good benefits. Nod your head if I get, get them right. 401K, profit sharing, dental, vision, health. And pension. I mean, so these are, these are good, good jobs. The other point I'd like to make is that Hydrate has plants all over the country. I went out to see my son in south, southern Colorado, and because of the construction it took me along the west side of the Blue Mesa, in other words, spit me out near Aspen on 70. And then I had to drive to Denver, so I'm west. And I pass a Hydrate chemical truck. I mean, they have plants everywhere, and they want to bring this project to Terre Haute. One thing I'd like to know, we're only, we're asking for just straight line of abatement. We are asking for 10-year tax abatement on both, and they, they, they make the points on your, on your questionnaire without, without any trouble at all. I'm done talking. If you'd like, I can, I can talk for hour and a half, three hours, if you'd like.
We're willing to do that.
And Brian Painelt is here, that can answer any questions. You might want to have him talk. Wisconsin accents are fantastic, really.
Brian, do you want to speak?
I can, a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, if you would tell them a little bit about the project.
Yeah, so basically, Hydrate Chemical, privately held company. Home base is Wisconsin, plants around the nation, primary Midwest. So, this project is really to expand our fertilizer business and our current bisulfide business for products. Our customer base out of Terre Haute facility is in Terre Haute and all surrounding states. We're moving further east, shipping product. We're moving further south, shipping product. For this expansion, it's really focused on the growth of our ammonium thiosulfate fertilizer product. As you know, that every year, we're hitting record yields of corn primaries because of this particular product and using it in other blends for it. Corn needs sulfur, not just nitrogen. So, that's why we continue to get it. So, we're, we're seeing a lot of, lot of need for it, and we're able to support it. We're able to provide good jobs for our employees. We're able to maintain our employees, and we want to make sure our employees have a good life and retirement moving forward. So, we're highly invested into our people. We want to continue it that way. As a family ran business, we want to have family values all the way down. So, want to just keep that moving forward, so.
One point, one point I forgot to mention was that there is $2.5 million of new equipment that will be part of the project, but are, is not part of the abatement. So, the tax, first property tax be paid on that $2.5 million of new equipment that won't qualify for the abatement.
Yeah, and the other point I would like to make on that, too, is that we are invested into Terre Haute. Last three years, roughly $20 million is put into that facility, not only to, to grow it, to update it, make sure it's safe. That's what we want. Not only for our employees, but also for our community. The other part of it, next two years, roughly $30 million. And that doesn't even include the dollars that we continue to upgrade our existing facility with. So, we're highly invested into, in Terre Haute and the growth that it can produce, so. Thank you.
Did you say pension and 401K?
Yep. So, basically, we are, we have three, we have three things. We have the pension, profit share, and the 401K.
That's fantastic. That's pretty rare. I don't think I've heard of that very much.
And what they're doing in order to make it more, when you combine the pension and profit sharing together, it puts more money into employees' accounts.
Sure.
It's a better benefit for them, so we'll be looking at making that move. So, it's one, but still, it's 401K, and our 401K offers a Roth and traditional.
That's great. That'll build some loyalty.
Benefits are, they're top-notch of Hydrate. They're really good.
Great. Welcome.
Few more council discussion?
I have one question.
Councilperson Boland?
You said you're locally invested, which we appreciate that. So, and you've done a lot of upgrades already in the past year, so you intend to continue to use local contractors?
Yes, local contractors, as long as they're able to do the work, right? So, that's key. But yeah, right now, majority is, for this project, we do have a general that's based out of Wisconsin, but we've worked with them before to help manage all the subcontractors in the area.
Who's the general?
General's Myron Construction.
Pardon me?
Myron Construction.
Madam President? Councilperson Aller?
First of all, how many years has Hydrate been there?
Hydrate's been there since, I believe it's 1990. I think it was Avganic before. Avganic had a plant in Codge Grove, Wisconsin, and down here at Terre Haute, we bought out that, Hydrate bought out that company. So, they moved some of the, the solvent, used to do solvent manufacturing down here. That went off to Codge Grove, and then Terre Haute slowly grew, but in 2014, that's when it started really boom with the sulfur business that we brought in. So, yes, since 1990.
And I think it was around 2014, somewhere in there. I had the pleasure to have a tour there, and at that point, the quarter midget track was still sitting there, but there was hopes and dreams of, of where you're at today. And I'd just like to thank you for investing in Terre Haute and in the First District. Glad to have you as a neighbor.
We're glad to be here.
And with that being said, I'd like to move to. For adoption of Resolution 2, 2022, as presented.
Second.
Spanish?
Jeff, I have one question. I'm not much of a numbers guy. But, but page three, the, the tax abated amounts only go like seven years? And page one mentions 10?
You were right. And tell me again, are you looking at the real or the personal?
The real.
Is this the real?
The real.
I believe it's because the tax cap, it, it's plugged into the calculator, and that's what gets spit out.
Okay. The calculator was used, that's all?
The calculator was used.
Okay.
I believe that, I do believe that the result is that it's in Harrison Township, and there's tax.
Well, I just want to make sure we collect.
Councilperson Elliott, I believe I can answer that.
We collect all we're supposed to, and not a dime more.
Councilperson Elliott, might be able to answer that. If you have an abatement in Harrison Township, by about the sixth year, seventh, you're not getting any benefit.
Okay.
I mean, really.
Thank you.
Once it's a 10-year abatement.
But we want all 10, in case that changes.
In case the laws change. Is there any more discussion by the council? Oh, wait. Who's second? I think I missed.
I got second.
You did, didn't you? I'm sorry. We have a motion on the floor by Councilperson Aller, seconded by Councilperson DeBon, to approve or adoption Resolution 2, 2022.
Forward, I guess. This is the first time we've been here.
It's, it's a resolution.
Just a resolution. Resolution 2, 2022, for adoption. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes.
I imagine a wild crowd behind the wall.
Michelle, next item on the agenda?
Resolution 3, 2022, designating an area commonly identified as 2200 South 13th Street and 1260 Lockport Road, Terre Haute, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area for the purpose of 10-year personal property tax abatement. This is for adoption.
Petitioner wish to speak?
Jeff Lind, Lind Law Firm, in Terre Haute. Yeah, this is the personal property side of that which I just discussed.
Discussion from the council?
Madam President?
Councilperson Aller?
There's no further questions. I move that we adopt Resolution 3, 2022, as presented.
Second.
Been a motion made by Councilperson Aller, seconded by Councilperson DeBon, to adopt Resolution 3, 2022, as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Oh. George is, Mr.?
Adjourn. Second.
Been a motion made by Councilperson Aller, seconded by Councilperson Garrison, to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.